Okey doke. Let's go ahead and get Boulder City Council Studies Session of Valentine's Day 2017 started. And I guess we have two topics tonight, the first one being a short one.
Susan Richstone is going to kick off this first topic and turn it over to Charles. So Susan?
Good evening. So the original idea for tonight's briefing was to really give council a preview of sort of what to expect in 2017 in the area of some of the development that's coming out of the ground. And in particular, knowing how much is happening in the Boulder Junction area, the focus was originally started to be primarily focused on that. And we're also including a few other major projects that are coming. And that's going to be the bulk of the presentation tonight. Charles is going to go through and orient you both to the projects and some information about each of them. I want to call your attention to the two-sided handout in front of you. And on one side, the side that's face up, we tried to give you a little bit on the housing side because we were particularly asked to make sure we provided some information on our progress in the area of affordable housing units, permanently affordable units. We tried to give you, number one, some context on housing units completed. We use certificates of occupancy, which means they're completed and ready to be occupied, trends over the last, actually, it's about 15 years, in blue. So the actual number of units each year and the numbers down below for each year. And then we did our best in terms of looking forward. I want to explain about the looking forward. There's three columns there, one called under construction, so those are pretty much happening, tech documents, so they're in review for their engineering and all the technical aspects of the development, which is sort of that last stage before they get under construction, and then some that are in review. What's important about the red bars is that those 644 units under construction, what we probably can tell you with assurance is those will all not get completed this year. Those are going to, those will all not get completed this year. So when that red bar next year turns to blue, expect it to be a lower, because these things take a few years usually to move through to completion, you know, whether it's portions of projects getting completed or other things. So I just didn't want you to think the red bar actually, you could sort of project those out year by year. But we were asked, and we did want to try and give you a little bit of a view forward. I will tell you that after three years of fairly high numbers of building permits issued, that last year, 2016, the number of permits was lower. So that also corroborates the fact that you're probably going to see a little bit. And, you know, I think all of you know that that's the nature of development. It tends to ebb and flow.
Susan, can I make a recommendation and a request? Or I guess a question and a suggestion. With respect to the stuff that's in construction, can you project out what of the 644, for example, how many are affordable? You probably could, couldn't you?
Yes, we're working on that.
Yeah, okay. The second is, this is great, and I know we're looking for great things to put in our dashboard, the newly launched dashboard, and I think something, this or something like this would be phenomenal, because this is really easy to understand. It's a snapshot, and you can update it. So this or something like this, I suggest you work with Tanya to get out on our dashboard. I think this is great.
We're working on it. I'm hearing whispers in my back, in my ear here, that we're on that.
Great, thanks.
One other question, I'm sorry, yeah, just, I'm sure I'm, well, anyway, looking at, take 2010, for example, and the COs issued, it looks like the lowest number of the entire period, except maybe 2001, but it's one of the highest growth rates. What's the?
Your growth rate obviously seems to be one year off from the COs issue. They run your shit right over.
Okay, I'll have the back room here give us an answer to that.
Yeah, I think it shifted.
Can you, you'll tell us exactly, it shifted. So that was a test. So it sounds like things are shifted off one, but we'll get confirmation. So what I'm going to request is let's let Charles go through the development project that's going to take about eight minutes or somewhere in that neighborhood. And then any questions on this? We have, as you can see, backup of the folks who really know all the answers, whether it's on the affordable units or the development trends. And if you have questions, we're here to do our best to answer them or follow up.
Great. Thanks, Susan. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Charles Farrow. I'm the Development Review Manager here at the Department of Planning, Housing and Sustainability. So as Susan said, I'll be taking you through some of the larger projects that have been approved and either are or will be going vertical in 2017. Primarily, I'm going to focus on the Boulder Junction neighborhood, since, as Susan said, there's a lot of activity in that area. But I'll also mention a project in North Boulder as well. So just a bit of background, as many of you know, the city's comprehensive plan establishes three main activity centers, the downtown, the university, and the Boulder Valley Regional Center. There are also several neighborhood centers that are identified in the city's comp plan, like the Boulder Junction area as well as North Boulder, which we'll be talking about this evening. So the Boulder Valley Regional Center is the retail heart of Boulder and is really organized around the 29th Street Mall. Just outside of the Boulder Valley Regional Center is a 160-acre area that was included in the Transit Village area plan. Many projects in both of those subareas have been recently completed, so I won't spend much time talking about those, but I'll just summarize them very quickly. The new hotels and office building at the corner of 28th and Canyon, which is coming out of the ground. The Solana development along Pearl Parkway on the south side near Junction Place is complete. The Boulder Junction development, which includes the RTD Underground Bus Facility, the hotel, the permanently affordable housing, as well as the relocation and rehabilitation of the historic Train Depot. The Nickel Flats condominiums that are just north of the Goose Creek along Junction Place also complete. And then finally, the event space that's in front of the entrance to the RTD bus facility. So all complete, for the most part. Much of the infrastructure supporting the redevelopment of the Transit Village area has also been complete, like the Junction Place Bridge, its tie-ins to the Goose Creek path, all pretty big moves, as well as the Pearl Parkway multi-way boulevard, which I think most people agree is pretty transformational when you consider the previous typology of Pearl Parkway. So it's been a pretty busy area to date to begin with. So to put the projects in context, I've created a bit of a crude model that I think helps to illustrate how things are filling in in the Boulder Junction area. So of course you have the Steel Yards project. It was completed before there was a Transit Village, but it really kind of lies at the heart of the area. So that's obviously complete. The Solana development on the south side of Pearl Parkway, the Boulder Junction development on the north side of Pearl Parkway, with the improvements to Pearl as well as Junction Place and the bridge. As I noted, the Nickel Flats condominium. So all of those complete, I think laid out in place as kind of a helpful illustrative. I'll talk about the projects that have been approved and will be developing here in the near future, and I'll talk about each one of these in more detail. But moving northward, we have the Commons 1, which is right behind the Steel Yards development, the Spark development on the north side of the Transit Village area near Valmont and the railroad tracks, the Commons 2, which is also right behind Steel Yards at 30th and Bluff on the Air Gas property, the 30th Street Row Homes on the west side of 30th, the Google Campus, which is also coming out of the ground as we speak, and then the Rev development. So all in, right now, this is everything that's active and is either coming out of the ground or will be coming out of the ground in the near future. So the first Spark, 10-acre site near the railroad tracks and Valmont on the north side of the Boulder Junction area, 247 units, 77 of which will be permanently affordable, with about 130,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, nonprofit space, a brew pub, and lots of new pad and bike connections. So here's a bird's eye view that is kind of an illustrative for massing purposes, that really illustrates how the neighborhood will fill in over time. And then some samples of the elevations that have been approved. I think architecturally, very modern, the new upslope brewing facility, and then this would be the Community Cycles building out on Valmont. Next, the 30th Street Row Homes, currently an RV storage yard, a little retail store, 1.85-acre site, 32 units marketed toward families, organized around a large centralized open space, more traditional row home vernacular. So this would be a view from 30th Street. Also has some support retail space that was approved as well. And then this would be a view looking east from the open space in the middle of the project. The Google and Rev sites located at the southeast and southwest corners of Pearl Parkway and 30th Street. The North Boulder Farmer's Ditch bifurcates both of the sites. The first Rev, again, is really organized around the ditch, amenitizing it, installing new multi-use paths to forge some pretty critical connections, especially in light of the recently installed bike underpass on 30th Street. This would be the view, basically standing on Google's property, looking across 30th Street at the intersection of 30th and Pearl. And then this would be the office building that's further south down 30th Street. So it's a six-acre site, 244 units, 138,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, and office space. And then, of course, the Google Campus, 4.5 acres roughly, currently going vertical, 330,000 square feet of office space. The view on the top of the screen would be that from Pearl Parkway. The view on the south would be the view from 30th Street. And similar to Rev, the site was really organized around amenitizing the ditch area and creating some bike path areas. So that's an image that was approved as part of the package from the interior of the site. Next, the Commons 1 and 2 along the railroad tracks, right behind the Steel Yards between Bluff and basically Goose Creek. So the first, you have the Commons 1, which will be, it's a 1-acre site with 100,000 square feet of office space. And I think the interesting thing about the Commons property is that only 60 underground parking spaces were provided for the building. Typically, you would see upwards of 350 parking spaces to serve a building like this. So it's really the parking district at work. And from a market perspective, it was a pretty bold move to build 100,000 square feet of Class A office space with 60 parking spaces, but it's pretty neat that it was financed so successfully. So I think the other thing that is interesting is that they're striving for net zero energy use. So these are both views from Junction Place, looking east through the site. And then the east elevation of the building will actually, along the railroad tracks, will completely be lined with photovoltaic panels that I believe the developer got as overstocked from the Apple campus in Cupertino, which I think is pretty neat. So just to the north of it is the Commons 2 at Bluff, right behind the Steel Yards development. So this is a view along Junction Place. So this, so 1-acre site, 36 units, 50,000 square feet of office space, also striving for net zero energy. And I think this is interesting because it's actually the city's first form-based code review that's in. So it hasn't quite been completed, but there'll be a couple subtle changes that'll be made here.
Can I just ask you about, on Commons 1, I guess that's still in development, or is that?
It's coming out of the ground right now, yeah.
So we don't have any information about actual parking statistics in terms of?
Not yet, yeah.
And how are you going to monitor that as that comes online?
Well, as part of the, I think that's part of the work that the district does.
They're part of the parking district, and of course, there's the garage to the south, and we're looking as development goes forward, such as on 30th Pearl and Pearl, any additional needs in the area. But that was, you know, the hope was, when we did the Transit Village area plan, was that folks would be able to reduce parking demand through having the regional bus facility and having shared parking.
Right. And I'm hoping we can track that, just to make sure it works. And there should be some kind of a tracking mechanism to give confidence to the public that people are coming to their work site without their four-wheeled box.
And so this would be the elevation, the east elevation along the railroad track. So where does that bring us in the Transit Village or the Boulder Junction area, rather, to date? With all the projects that I just described, it comes out to be at about 938 units. This is also included on your handout. TVAP anticipates anywhere between 1,400 and 2,400 units. On the permanently affordable side of that, 175 will actually be built onsite. So that's about a third of the TVAP goal of 300 to 475 permanently affordable units. So this is just phase one of TVAP. We still have an entire another phase, as well as the city-owned site at 30th and Pearl that council has discussed recently. An RFP will be going out shortly to help program the sites, although there'll be more discussion about what actually happens there. But the Transit Village area plan really called for a high percentage of permanently affordable housing on that site as well. So really quickly, want to take you up to North Boulder to Broadway and Lee Hill, the North Boulder Armory site approved last year. So this is an 8-acre site, 200 dwelling units, 8,400 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and then the preservation and adaptive reuse of one of the armory buildings that you can see in the back, right behind where it says Block 1 there on this bird's eye. And a lot of new bike and pad and vehicular connections that are all consistent with the North Boulder sub-community plan that's been approved up there. So just some imagery along Broadway.
Charles, do you know that commercial space? Is that all along Broadway, or does it go into the site as well?
Majority of it is on Broadway, and I believe some of it turns the corner into the development.
Okay, thank you.
So a view from the interior of the site, you can see in the background there the armory building with the iconic smokestack. Another image from within the site. So in conclusion, I would note that, just reminding everybody that we have real-time, up-to-date, up-to-the-minute development info on the city's website. It's complete with plans, meeting dates, all of the application materials. So this is just a snapshot of the city's website. But up in the search prompt in the upper right-hand corner, you can just enter Development Review Projects, and it is a map base. You can search by address or just the map and the city. All of the different application types are color-coded. And you'll see on the left, all of those little hyperlinks are actually application materials. So if you want to look at plans or the applicant's written statement, most of that stuff is usually available as soon as we get it. We keep it updated throughout the life of the project. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions. People are always welcome to contact me as well if they have questions about the status of any projects or the process. Contact information is here, and I'm happy to answer any question.
So Charles, I really appreciate this update and having a real point in time in terms of where our development is. So that's great. And as Jane knows, and probably other people on council knows, I would hope that we can continue to get these kinds of updates on, I don't know, some kind of a regular basis, whether it be quarterly or semi-annually or whatever. I am, I have two questions. One of them has to do with what's happening at the Transit Village area. And, I'm trying to get my, and if I understand right from the chart you showed about permanently affordable units, right now, we're only getting 247 units, and we anticipate somewhere between 300 and 475. Do you think, given what we have right now in the mix, we will achieve that goal?
30th and Pearl, once that comes online, we will.
Which I think is slated, Deb. I mean, almost.
With the Pollard site?
Right, yeah.
And then, and then the other question, and it really is maybe more of a comment than a question, and it just has to do with everything is going to 55 feet and all of what you showed, and this is no comment on you, but just what's coming forward is very boxy and at 55 feet. And I think some of the public's kind of reaction to some of this is that it's also boxy and there's not a lot of character associated with it. So I guess I'm curious in terms of what you as staff think about what we could do to make this architecturally more interesting, more varied, and less boxy at 55 feet.
So we have zoning typology that I think kind of drives, you know, that outcome. I think it's also been an analog that's been, in a way, celebrated because it's been kind of successful all throughout town. But I would say that the form-based code project was really in response to some of that and really looking at what types of standards we could put in there to help drive different outcomes. So incentivizing things like slope roofs, all discussions we had as part of the form-based code project. I think the other thing I would say is that through the Design Excellence Initiative that council supported two years ago, we have a fantastic urban design staff in Jim Robertson and Kalani Pohoa, and we're actually spending more time with the details than I think we ever have. Council supported as part of the budget a year ago, a Development Review Inspector. So we actually have boots on the ground now, out there looking at details. And it has been tremendous so far, the amount of things that we're catching that don't always necessarily match the plan. So I think those are a few ways we're addressing it. I think on the whole, the typology of our zoning, I think, kind of drives some of those outcomes. But the hope is that in the Transit Village, that the form-based code helps to reshape some of that.
Great, thank you.
And I'm just going to tack on to also say the importance of the relationship between the buildings and the public realm. And once the 30th and Pearl site comes online, we will also have the city neighborhood, you know, the neighborhood park there, Goose Creek, the depot, Junction Place. I think we're really creating a wonderful public realm out there, and that was a really important aspect of the planning that went on and the investments, the public investments in the area. So.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. So this, this chart, which hopefully will end up on the dashboard, I guess, a couple things, and it might be useful to explain to all of us in the public what some of us already know, but about how the growth rate affects these numbers, because some of these numbers are huge. And so it's, it doesn't seem like everything, anyhow, can you explain how the 1% applies?
So I'll start big picture, then I'll go down.
Yep.
So the first is, today, we have a growth management ordinance that has a goal of a 1% growth rate, but there are a lot of exemptions, so there is not an actual hard 1% limit on growth. So that's number one, for folks to understand. Number two is, when we look overall, big picture on the 1% growth rate, the idea is it's 1% on average. So as you can see here, development goes up and down, and in general, we are still within the 1% growth rate, even with a few years that have been above that. Then in terms of the actual chart and the observation that was made earlier, it is exactly what folks were saying. So basically, if you take the number, the 2010 number that Andrew was pointing to, the percent growth rate is actually from '09 to 2010. So it's actually looking at that 492 that shows up in the '09 column. So that's a little bit confusing. We may want to either add a note or decide if that's the best way to show it or not. But it is sort of, that's the explanation.
And so I get how it happens on average, but there's, are there, do limits ever apply, or it just, it works out this way? I mean, you know, like, we've had several years of 1.6. Does that mean, does something happen to, over what point?
There's no mechanism in place in our growth management system to require that there, there could be actually 2% or 3%, or it depends on what comes through. We council a number of years ago, and I can't remember now, it's quite a few years ago, actually provided for a number of exemptions from the system. And basically, most of our units that come through today, some over 90%, are not subject to an actual 1% limit under the current ordinance.
That's just a mixed use.
Not just mixed use, there's a lot more. Anything that's been rezoned, and a lot of, so the whole Transit Village has been rezoned, so all the units out there, there's a number of exemptions.
But if you had, but we would not allow more than 1% per year that are not exempt, correct? I mean, that is a hard cap.
Correct. So that is a mechanism.
Yes, but that's very few of the units that'll come through. You're over.
So we're never going to hit it because of all the exemptions?
There is no real one, there is no, there is a goal to be within the 1%. There is no longer a mechanism that actually limits growth to 1% at this point in time.
So, but the 1.6, for example, is inaccurate?
Correct.
It's without exemptions, 1.6% is what the?
It's everything.
Okay. And then, I guess, both in the Boulder Junction and overall, I guess I could just do the math, but in terms of the percent of affordable units that we're getting overall of the total across the city, I guess, is what, that's, you know, people, yeah. What is the overall rate of affordability per number of units that we're, and how's that trend over time? Since that's such a big focus, I'm curious whether we're gaining ground on that or not.
Yeah, so over the period from 2001, it's actually 2000, to 2016, it's been 24%.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's been 24% over that period.
Of the 4,000?
That's correct.
24% of the units between, on this map, but 2000 to 2016 have been affordable.
Right, right.
Of all the units, 24% of them have been affordable?
That's correct.
Under what, what, you know, under what, you know, there's different ways to view what's affordable and what's not.
Sure, so that's, everything under 69% AMI. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 79% AMI.
Okay, and last question from me, sorry, to hog. In terms of, well, I guess we don't have it citywide, but in terms of, this feels like a lot of units, but we're also building a lot of commercial. Do, we have a, an equation that equates roughly how many jobs goes without, you know, thousands of feats of commercial. What's the trend in terms of the jobs, adding jobs versus adding houses over that time period? Or do we know? Or do we know? Or is that a fair question?
So the jobs issue is a little bit different. We definitely have, it's difficult. It's not as easy as a housing unit to count. You have an average of number of households. So what we, when we usually look at the data, I think council's used to seeing, is when we do our annual community profile, we have both population and housing unit estimates, and we have job estimates. And that's where we usually look at what's happening with our ratio. Then we have the issue, separate from that, of actually how much non-residential space we're adding and who could occupy that. So I would say, in recent trends, we were trying to look at this, but in the time we had, it's a little bit tough because some of the space built are parking garages and other things. So we definitely, right now, have quite a bit of commercial space being built, as you saw, between the Google campus, the hotels, and of course, all the space there. So I think, in terms of the number of employees that could potentially occupy that, yes, it's probably leaning towards the increased employees that is greater than the housing that is currently occurring right now. And is Chris trying to add something? Did you have something to add?
No, she's going to say the jobs-to-pop ratio has only changed by .03.
Since, since what?
Let him say that on the record.
In the last five years, we basically haven't had, it's three-tenths of a percent difference because, again, there's the issue of adding space and what potentially could happen in that, but the majority of our space is already here. So the change is happening within that space. In terms of how it's being used is the biggest factor. Does that make, is that?
Because it's redeveloped.
Just reuse, I'm just saying, most of our space is already here, so the way our existing space is used is the biggest factor when you're looking at overall estimate. That said, of course, how much additional commercial space we add each year has an impact in the long term of your jobs-housing ratio. And right now, we are definitely adding quite a bit of commercial space.
So could you just repeat what Chris said? I just didn't hear it very well.
So in the, what we do, as Susan described, we track on an annual basis. We estimate the number of jobs in the city, and we actually use real data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics on the actual number of jobs reported through unemployment insurance in Boulder. And then we add a self-employment estimate to the city that's based on kind of three different factors and census data. So we estimate the actual number of jobs. We're always, that's always about eight months behind, based on the data reporting. But in the last five years, the jobs-to-pop ratio has basically been .92 to .95. So it's changed by three-tenths of a percent over the last five years.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Chris, Chris...
So we're increasing our commercial? .92 to .95?
Correct. It went down at one point, and then it's come back up in the last year.
So Chris, I've asked this before, but, and it's very hard to get good data, but I didn't know we got it from the unemployment data. That's interesting. But obviously, in a place like Boulder, lots of people, especially college students, can have multiple jobs. And so the number of jobs is not necessarily the number of employees, the number of unique employees, right?
That's very correct. And we try and be very specific when we say "jobs," that's jobs, not people.
Right. So we probably care more about people than jobs, and that's probably a really hard number to come by.
We have not figured out a way to be able to calculate that.
Okay.
And do we know anything about whether the types of jobs are changing? And so that's one, you know, it's obviously one thing to say we've got the same amount of jobs relative to the population, but are they, you know, service, white collar? What's the, do we know anything about that ratio and if it's changing at all?
Yeah, so the Boulder Economic Council does their quarterly reports and then their annual report, and they do look at industry classification or sectors and where those jobs are. And that's reported based on employer. So we have an overall understanding of industry mix. And then there's some additional analysis you can do based on what the industry classification of a business is, understanding how many of those, maybe white collar versus blue collar. So we do have that. I don't have that information with me, but especially industry classification or our sectors, we track that on a yearly basis.
Would you mind posting that later?
Sure, yeah, we can send you a link to the latest report.
Thanks. Anything else? So this is really cool stuff, and I think we will want to, if it doesn't end up on the dashboard soon, just get reported, get reports periodically, because I do think this is kind of, I don't know, what we're focused on a lot these days. So, thank you.
Thanks. So our next presentation is the Human Services Strategy. And I actually know that Karen is in the building somewhere, but I don't know where she is right now. So hopefully, Karen can come in and...
Oh, there she is.
So as Karen gets set up, a thing that I want to remind all of you of is that her presentation and the discussion with regard to it will be about two and a half hours. We've saved a half an hour at the very end to talk about issues related to health and safety along the Boulder Creek corridor. We actually will not be talking about the overarching policy issues regarding homelessness, other than anything Karen mentions, during the last half hour. That will be saved for our May 9 meeting, in which Karen and the team will be reporting back on the outcomes of working with the Homeless Working Group that was started late last year. Their report will be done at the end of April, and then that will be part of the May 9 study session. So just want it to be very clear that we're not talking about homeless policy issues, but health and safety along the Boulder Creek corridor for the last half hour. So when Karen's ready, she will start.
And my understanding is, you're going to break up...
We were ready.
You're, you're going to break this presentation, you're going to do a presentation, we're going to stop and talk, another presentation, stop, okay?
We will stop it and talk at various points.
It is chunked.
It's chunked. Good evening. All right, so we're losing our PowerPoint here. So let's see if I can get this back. All right, so from beginning. Oh, there we go. Bad connection. I'm Karen Ron. I'm Director of Human Services for the city. And with me presenting is Matt Sandin, who's our Strategic Planning Manager. This is his first time in front of council, so first time that he will be speaking with you about the strategy. So, and we have a lot of other staff here in the audience, experts, you know, on our staff, who are available to answer questions also as they come up. So tonight, we're going to focus on four areas that we want to present to you and have a discussion about. There was a lot of information in the council packet, a lot of background, a lot of detail. We're not going through any of that, but we want to be presenting the key points in these four areas to have a discussion about, so we can finalize the recommendation in our recommendations and our strategy when we bring that draft strategy document back to you in May. So the four areas we would like to talk about is to debrief the community engagement results with you, to talk about the goal and focus areas that we've developed as a result of our process for, over the last couple of years. We want to talk about our community funding recommendations and some direct services recommendations. Get your feedback so we can refine our plan and bring that back. So you're very familiar with this. This is going to be our more nimble and flexible five-year blueprint to guide all of our investments in direct services and community funding for the next five years. It reflects all the changes that have happened, social, economic, and demographic shifts over the last 10 years and projected out into the future. And we feel that the recommendations we're making will align our investments with the community goals and the feedback that we heard from residents in the community. So there were three phases to this development of the strategy. The first phase was research, assessments, investigating trends and issues, best practice in other cities. We went through a pretty robust community engagement process for the last year, and we are at the end of that process and heading into Phase Three of our draft strategy. This is in your packet. This filters, it's in your packet, you can see it more clearly in your packet. This is kind of like the process that we went through to develop the options and recommendations that are in the memo. So you can see all the different elements that were considered in driving to the recommendations, ultimately leading to the kinds of community outcomes that we are striving for. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt to talk with you about the community engagement process and the goal and focus areas that were developed as a result of that.
Thank you. So we went through, as Karen mentioned, a robust community engagement process to really get the input from our community. So through that process, we conducted it over a period of about a year and a half in 2015 and 2016. And it included a random telephone survey, a number of different online surveys or in-person surveys. We had 21 different focus groups, two open community events, and then a range of other miscellaneous activities, all geared to trying to get the input from our community. Altogether, we had 35 unique, different activities, and we engaged over 1,600 Boulder residents. We also received input from 68 different partner organizations. If you want some real detail on the types of activities we conducted, Attachment C in your packet provides that detail of each of the community events. It tells you how many people were engaged during the event, where it was held, when it was held, that sort of information. A couple of key points that I want to make about it is, first, that we did it at multiple times and locations. And we also tried to oversample for underrepresented communities. So we really realized that we needed to engage more with the Hispanic-Latino community, with low-income community, that sort of thing. And then we also included both closed-ended and open-ended questions, so we could get both quantitative and qualitative information. So some of the key findings that we got from community engagement, the first was that the concerns that the community identified really mirrored some of the issues we had identified in our Phase One research. The bulk of the responses to our open-ended questions, I'd say the vast majority, fit within one of the six-issue areas we identified. And the ones that didn't were things that were outside the scope of city responsibility or fit within other agencies. The second was that there were some common concerns and consistent themes across all different demographics and methodologies. So we had our different methodologies we used and the different demographics that we connected with. And the key consistent themes that we always saw were that community affordability was almost always the top community concern, specifically related to housing and transportation, but other poverty and economic issues always seemed to surface in our community engagement events. We also had concerns, almost pretty consistently raised, about homelessness, healthcare access and affordability. Young children were generally the preferred audience or the preferred target for our activities, as were families. We also saw some differences based on who we were talking to through the community engagement process. And those usually broke out along income and race and ethnicity. So we identified a couple of the key ones that we saw. The first was that when we addressed the issue of an inclusive and welcoming community, if you look at the overall results from our community engagement, it generally ranked towards the bottom. But if we pulled out the low-income and Hispanic-Latino community, those concerns went much higher than they were in the overall population. The second was differences related to healthcare, where we saw, among our Hispanic-Latino population, issues like physical healthcare and substance abuse generally surfaced more, as did access to health insurance and health insurance coverage. But our white, non-Hispanic Latino respondents more strongly identified with issues related to mental health services. So there was a distinction on the healthcare issues, and that was a distinction we saw in some other issues as well, but I think surfaced most strongly than healthcare. And then finally, in our open-ended answers, we really identified some concerns about inclusion, both in terms of people saying that they didn't feel included or welcomed in our community, and then in terms of comments that we received that seemed not to be very inclusive types of comments. And that really identified some concerns about welcoming an inclusive community for us. So when we set about trying to determine our priorities, there's a number of things that we looked at. It wasn't just the community engagement piece. That was certainly a big aspect of what helped us set our priorities. But we also looked at our Phase One research, looked at what was really a core issue, the effect of whether it would have a greater impact downstream. And then, you know, some of our key principles about integrated and coordinated solutions, whether we could get to data-driven outcomes, things like that. So I think the key point to impart here is that community engagement was part of what we looked at for identifying community priorities. So again, these are our six issues, and a little description on what they're about. I think they're fairly self-explanatory, but we have aging well, a good start, economic mobility and resilience, health and well-being, homelessness, and inclusive and welcoming community. So for each of our six issues, we set sort of big-picture goals for the issue, and you can see these here, they're also included in your packet. And then, starting on page 15 of the packet, we have more detail in terms of our focus areas within each of these six-issue areas. So each of the six issues has three, four, or five different focus areas that we want to focus on as we're developing strategies for the community. In looking at prioritizing, we really reached the conclusion in analyzing all the information that we had, that the core issue that people were talking about related to human services was economic mobility and resilience. Really, poverty and affordability issues popped up in almost every community engagement activity we undertook. And it's a core issue that affects all the other five issues that we work on, whether it's our homeless community, whether it's our older adults, the children in our community, health and well-being issues, and then whether people are feeling included and welcoming in our community. And so we felt that that was really the center of all that we were talking about. And to back that up, we have, you know, a number of different data points, and these are some of the key data points.
Previous chart, I just wanted to make a comment with respect to transportation. Transportation doesn't appear up there, and I know that the county took the same diagram and added transportation. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, and with regard to transportation and housing, we know that those are key issues that, across all populations and issues, that's not something that we actually provide community funding for or direct services for, either housing or transportation. So that's why they don't appear there. Certainly, around housing and transportation, we have to partner with our city departments and community organizations that are actually working in that area. But with regard to our human service goals, transportation and housing would appear in our partnership role, not our, necessarily our community funding or our direct services, because that's not our primary focus. Does that make sense?
Can I follow up on that? Because Mary is a really good question, and it's something I've been asking for a long time. We, I think somewhat artificially divvy things up along department lines, and we have other departments. And when you say "we don't provide this service," actually, we, the city of Boulder, most certainly do, because the Transportation Department puts a lot of money into it, just like Parks puts a lot of money into health and well-being for lower-income people and kids, and it's very heavily subsidized, as arguably it should be. But I've never felt like we capture the whole picture, and I think that's always been my problem, and it's because we just divide things up on these departmental lines, which maybe makes sense for an organizational structure and a management structure. But from a policy perspective, and from how much you're spending on things, it's always been very hard to get that whole picture. So, you know, I said this before, if somebody says, "How much are we spending on human services?" It's not what's spent in your department. You have to add all the money that goes to, you know, VIA. You have to add the money that goes to park support for low-income kids. And I've never found a way to grasp that.
Yes, and I think it wasn't all that long ago, maybe a couple of years ago. If our budget director is in the audience, she might be able to answer the question. But we did put together a spreadsheet... But we did put together a spreadsheet around what are all the funding sources coming from all the departments that are going to different types of human services, including like youth programs and children programs and homelessness, just to capture that. I think in the bigger picture, yes, you're absolutely right. However, I think in terms of our department master plan and planning for the specific types of programs and services that we offer and the types of community funding that we provide to the community, it is fairly discreet. So that's what we, I totally hear you, because we've had this conversation many, many times. But we, in terms of the discrete programs and services and funding that we provided the community, that's what this focus is.
Karen, could you resend that chart from several years ago?
Yes, it's a couple of years old, but yeah, we could definitely send it out.
And all you need to do is just say it's a few years old, but I think that would be informative. Okay.
So we put down a couple of our key data points related to poverty and economic mobility and resilience in Boulder. And, you know, these aren't all of our data points. The memo has a lot more information in it. But just to kind of set the stage for why we identified this as our key issue in human services. The first relates to total population poverty in Boulder. And we know the state demographer came in here a couple of weeks ago and gave a different figure. We actually had some conversations with her after that meeting, and there were some differences in the formula that we think we resolved, and we ran by our numbers with her. And she was fine with the way we were portraying it. And so just to kind of run through here, I think the key points to see is, first of all, we've got concerns about the number of people who are living at poverty, below poverty, or near poverty. And there's a couple of different measures you could look at. You could look at FPL, which is really an inadequate measure of poverty. If you think that the family of four, FPL, 100% FPL is 24,600 a year.
That's federal poverty level.
Federal poverty level, exactly. But we also look at things like the self-sufficiency standard, which is approximately 300% of FPL, or 75,906 for a family of four with two children. So that's why we have a couple of numbers up here. The second key concern for us is the disparity we're seeing between our different populations in Boulder, where there's a big disparity from the white, non-Hispanic Latino population and the Hispanic Latino population in terms of the number of people or the percentage of the population in poverty or near poverty. So that's why we have different numbers up there, to give you a better sense of what's going on in our community and the key concerns that we have related to this issue. We also have some numbers related to livability. And again, it gets at some of those disparity issues, where we see, for example, educational attainment, which goes to income potential, earnings potential. Our white, non-Latino population, much more educational attainment within that population. There's a big gap between the Hispanic-Latino-only population. And that's reflected in the income levels that we're seeing in the community as well. We also have concerns about the disparity between married couples and single heads of households. And so that's some of the data you see here. But again, in the report, as well as in Attachment B to the memo, there's a lot more information about our research and the results that we found.
Just to understand this last thing, so that's just for a single father, head of household? He's not with a partner? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that leads us to our first two questions.
Our first two questions. So feedback from council on whether these six goal areas and this focus area of economic mobility and resilience as a key focus area for our strategy. So does council agree or have feedback on these goals with economic mobility as the key focus area?
Sam.
So when will we be touching on the actual budget numbers? Is that going to be a later portion of the evening, or?
So we'll be bringing back budget recommendations based on the feedback that we get tonight, because we will have to parse out the budget and sources of funding based on your feedback tonight. So that, all the budget recommendations will be coming back in May.
So if we have comments on what was in the memo about the budget, this is a time to give you that feedback. Okay.
No, no, no. In a few minutes, Karen's going to go on to the next part. And the next part is going to describe the human services funding.
Okay.
So this is just those two questions.
So I just want to, I won't go into the numbers, but I think the key area for me is, yes, economic mobility and resilience are very important. They're crucially important, and you've done a good job of illustrating why. But I don't want to make this a zero-sum game kind of trade-off. I want our discussion to be able to be broad about everything that we want to support and then have the budget discussion kind of subsequent to that. So yes, I agree, economic mobility and resilience are very important. I'm glad to see you highlighting them here, because it's a big concern of affordability. However, I don't necessarily agree that we should sacrifice other programs for emphasizing economic mobility and resilience. And I also agree with the goals that you have, being good ones. Transportation, obviously, is a component that needs to be brought in. I don't think it needs to be brought in here, because we have a whole department for it. But like Lisa asked, I would like to understand the supporting components of human services that do come from other departments. So I look forward to having the budget discussion at the appropriate time.
Okay, so we have Bob, Mary, Erin. And I'm just going to say, I agree with what you just said. So I don't need to talk.
I'm going to agree with what you just said, exactly. First of all, I find some of these distinctions with words a little arbitrary. I mean, I thought that your response to Erin's question on Hotline was helpful, to see the actual programs that were within at least two of the six categories. And I could have reclassified them in other categories. So I think the words are a little arbitrary, and I completely agree with Sam. This cannot be, and I know we're going to talk about budget in a second, but I don't want to, in answer to your second question, yes, but, but not at the expense of other programs. So this is not zero-sum. So we can talk, these are all important. And I don't know if that's more important than the other five, I guess, is my response to that question.
Mary.
And Erin.
So I would agree with what's been said so far. And I just wanted to make a comment in addition. I really like the economic mobility and resilience emphasis. And I would just say that as you move forward with this, you would consider partnering with Economic Vitality and companies to create pathways for people that live in Boulder that can go into those jobs that are provided, for instance, by Google. When I think about how I ended up in Boulder, it was through a strong commitment from IBM to have a diverse workforce. And that's how I ended up here. So I think that if we partner with companies and use our Economic Vitality policies to accomplish some of that, I think we could start to get somewhere on providing those pathways.
And one of the focus areas under economic mobility is a new area for us that we haven't funded or worked in in the past, which is employment skills training, retraining, aligning the needs of the community workforce with folks who need the training or need retraining to be able to enter into higher-paying positions. That's not something that we have worked in. So this is another aspect of this economic mobility and resilience. I think that something also that was driving this focus on economic mobility and resilience is the direction from council over maybe the last couple of years, that your desire was to focus more narrowly and deeply, so that we could really focus on some core driving root cause issues in the community and not be funding, you know, many things across the board without much funding. So that was also something that we took into consideration. Where could we put funding that would really drive to root causes that impact some of these other areas? Every area that we, I have identified are critical, crucial programs. In every area, in every agency, in every program that we fund, provides critically needed services. If we are really trying to drive toward a goal of making an impact on community livability and closing the livability gap, I think there's going to be some very hard choices down the road, unless more resources are brought into the system. And we'll be talking just a little bit about, not to get into the budget, but a little bit about where some possibilities to be closing this gap are when we get to the community funding section.
Okay, so we'll avoid the trade-off discussion just yet. I have Erin, Matt, and Lisa.
Great. Well, I do agree with your six broad goals. I think it's an insightful parsing out of our different areas of services. I'll echo what Sam and others have said about not wanting it to be a zero-sum game. And so I would say that the economic mobility and resilience is a key service priority, but not the key service priority, in my feeling. And I was concerned to see that it was, elevating that was coming at the expense of health and well-being, which to me is also a very critical, obviously, area. And it seems like you could draw that graph with health and well-being right in the middle instead, and it could work very well that way. So, you know, we'll get, we can talk about that in the budget thing. But I wanted to highlight some of the things that you mentioned in the foundational frameworks, which I thought were really, really good. A couple of them were shift more resources to upstream investments to forestall and alleviate crisis and emergency response and address root causes, focused resources where the city can have a measurable impact and create social resilience. A couple others. I think these are wonderful. I think that that's how we need to focus. And so rather than kind of divvying things up in percentages on these priorities, I think if we could have the kind of good focus on those foundational frameworks and then look at what programs fulfill those the best, we can talk more about that in the budget.
Matt.
Yeah, so I do agree with the six goals. I still wish, however, that we had some way to look at all the things that touch on human services across the city, even if they happen to be in other departments, because we put a lot of money and effort into those, and they're all good things. And I just keep feeling this gives us a kind of limited snapshot, both in terms of what we're doing and also in terms of what our priorities are, whether it's money, and it's not always money. Sometimes it's money, sometimes it's effort, sometimes it's regulation. There's a lot of things cities do. It's not just money that we are involved in. And so, I don't know, I always just feel like this is too narrow a focus, because we focus on what your department does and miss that much bigger picture. I mean, it's hard to talk about economic mobility and resilience without talking about housing, and yet the housing money comes from some other place. And yet, that's a huge thing that we work on, and we spend a lot of money, put a lot of effort into it, a lot of regulatory effort into it, and somehow it's not part of human services, which just makes no sense to me. So that's one comment. And the other one is, yes, I do agree that economic mobility and resilience should be the key human services priority. It's a bit of a big bucket, though, and you can kind of stuff almost anything in it, which is both good and bad. I mean, it's good in the sense that you can cover a lot of ground. It's bad in the sense that it doesn't necessarily help you focus. And I do agree, Karen, with what you said. I know it is hard to change things, but every five, or 10, or 15, or 20 years, you really do need to look at what's most effective and most workable and making a difference. And other entities have done that. The county has certainly done it. We've seen the Community Foundation do it, where they've decided they can't do absolutely everything for everybody in every sphere, and that they actually accomplish more if they focus on certain things. And I do think that's what we should do, and I think that's the right focus.
Lisa.
So I would thank you for putting out these six priorities. But, and I agree a lot with what Matt just said, but for me, it's really hard to not include children in this whole thing, because they are our future. And so for me, I look at a good start. And two things that you discussed in our memo was daycare costs to people, which is over $13,000 a year. I have three children, or I had three, I still have them, but they're grown up and they're self-sustaining right now. But I can't imagine putting out $39,000 a year for daycare for my children, who are all within five years of each other. That, I couldn't have done it then, and I couldn't do it now. And so I think we need to look at that. And I think education is the big equalizer. And getting children to have the same skills as their peers when they come into first grade is incredibly important in terms of just where they are, their understanding, and their self-esteem. So that's one thing. And then, I was speaking with my sister, who works in Kansas City, and she was talking about a program in their high school system where children are allowed, you know, to go something like four days a week to high school, and then one day a week, they work. And they work for a business. And all of that money goes to college education. So number one, the children are committed to going to either a trade school or college after high school. And I guess for me, I would like to look in the city and maybe, you know, the Community Foundation or somebody else is doing something like that, but to establish good work programs for our adolescents that really want to get to a different place than where they are. And again, it's education, it's determination. And so I guess I can't go just with economic mobility and resilience. I understand not focusing, but I think our youth are our greatest asset and the way to get out of where we are. And I guess I would like to see, I don't know if we partner with BVSD, if we partner with Community Foundation, if there's programs like this already, but they are our future. And yes, it's a 20-year timeline, but I think we put money in now, and I think it will have huge dividends in the future. So I'd like to see some focus on the good start.
We've actually had, in the not-too-distant past, recent past, conversations with workforce Boulder County, the county, our Youth Opportunities Advisory Board, and the Chamber around subsidized wage program, a training program for entry into the employment market, because young people in high school and coming out of high school are competing with college graduates for the same types of jobs in our community. So, and then people with college educations are competing with other people for very low-wage positions. So it's an issue in our community.
So, oh, I was going to jump in, but why don't you go ahead, and then I will jump in.
Well, I just wanted to comment on something that Matt said and on something that Lisa said. When Matt mentioned about, and you reminded us that we had said, "Go deep" rather than shallow. And when I did grant evaluation for the Community Foundation, we did some of that shallow giving, and you ended up giving lots of grants, very little money that really didn't have any impact. So I think that going deep and focusing on the one goal is really the way to go. So I think that's important. And then to respond to Lisa's comment, the Community Foundation already has a school readiness initiative that they've been doing for several years now. And so perhaps that is a place that we could partner.
So, okay, so I'll just throw in, and then we can just move on, is you can tell we have an issue with prioritization, because I think all of these things are important, but I guess I want to salute your efforts to prioritize. And I do agree that affordability is what everybody is talking about. And so I think that it's a good organizing principle. I think what will be interesting is to, and this is probably what we're going to get to, but this notion of our six, I think you called them goals, some of the principles about where we can make a difference and where the gaps are and those sort of things. And then kind of map out, you know what? Community Foundation's got a great program. They got that part covered for kids. BVSD has that, but could use some partnership. I mean, you kind of map out, okay, here's how we think everything is covered and where the gaps are, and then where our roles should be. And I think if we saw that suite, including, affordable housing is covered by our housing folks, so that one, we feel good about. Transportation, we might Transportation, we might want to be talking about ecopasses for low income, so that's, note that as an internal discussion. But if we kind of mapped it all out, I think we'd have a better sense of, and I'm assuming you did that, and this is the result of that, but you might have to take us along on that mapping exercise to see what's already being covered, to convince us, yeah, we can let go that and go deep other places.
So at this point, we have our goal and focus areas. So if you look at the focus areas within the goals, that identifies what has emerged as the most important issues within these goal areas. So the next step would be to identify specific strategies that match those focus areas. So as you say, for example, and when we talk about our direct services and funding, looking at, well, what is being done in the community around these, in these areas, and mapping that out, and we can certainly do that. One of the issues in establishing funding policy based on what current programs are being funded in the community is they change. So what the Community Foundation may be focusing on in their five-year strategy may change in a couple of years, or the types of programs and services that may be funded elsewhere may change. And we can also do that. We can also shift what we're funding from a five-year period to another strategic five-year planning period, based on what other resources are available in the community. So that's certainly possible, too. We will attempt to do that type of mapping for every program in the community related to human services in these areas when we bring back the budget requests or the budget and resource analysis in May. But I would guess, just kind of knowing what's out in the community, that there is nothing being fully funded to the extent where we would say we don't have to contribute to that. Though, the early childhood program that the Community Foundation funds, the school readiness program specifically directed at family, friend, and neighbor care, the PASO program, the El PASO program, that's a program, while the Community Foundation is funding it, to take it to scale needs a lot more community resources. And also, that five-year commitment has expired. So there's just a lot of variables around what's being funded out in the community I think we may want to think about in terms of policy for funding, whether we link that to what other organizations are funding, but certainly to the extent we can identify.
Well, how have you identified gaps? I'm going to speed you up.
Yep.
You're going to talk, and then you've got to go to the next section, right?
Yep, we have to go to the next section.
So I just want to make a distinction here. When we talk about going deep on the subject area, I think we should go deep on the programs and the focus areas within each of these subject areas. I'm just not so comfortable with the shift that we'll talk about here in a little bit being so big. So it's not that I disagree with what you said, Mary, about you can be more effective with your money, so we should be trying to be as effective as we can, and you've just talked about some of that, Zan. But I'm still not comfortable with the idea that we would take one whole suite of programs and completely reduce it in large amounts. I wanted to make a distinction, that there's what you do within the program, and then there's how you allocate across the programs.
So you better leave time for that discussion. So keep going.
Okay, we're moving on. Okay, so let's take a look now at where we're currently investing funds, and some of this information may help explain this shift from health and wellness to economic mobility. So this is just kind of a snapshot and overview of where we are currently investing. So this is our community funding, this is our direct services, this is all of the department resources. So you can see about 35% is going to direct services, 46% to community funding, and 19% to partnerships, various partnerships that we have. And over on the right, you can see when we look at these six areas, where this roughly breaks out. And as has already been mentioned, some of the things we do can hit every one of these areas. So how we have sorted what we do and our community programs is where there is the greatest single alignment, where there's the most alignment. And certainly, a lot of direct services and certainly our nonprofit partners could fit into many of these categories. So you can see where it lines up. So our biggest portion across the board is health and well-being at 26%, followed by a good start at 20, and then you can see everything else lines up down to 10%.
Karen, can I stop you there for a second?
Sure.
Because in the email response that you sent out today, and thank you for that very thorough response, you mentioned that health and well-being totaled 948,000. I see a very different number up there. Can you explain the difference, please?
So what you were looking at was our community funding. This is all of our investment. So this includes our direct services, our contracts, our community funding, everything.
Got you. So the email that you sent to me was about our Human Services Fund?
That's right.
And what's been out of that?
That's right.
And this includes all the other funding sources as well.
Yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
So kind of follow-up on that. Could you define these terms, because I'm not sure the difference between a funder, a direct service, and a lead partner?
So, for example, we provide direct services. So we actually operate some programs in the community. We operate the Family Resource Schools Program in the elementary schools, where we provide services to higher-risk families, families who have ESL, who are ESL families, or their children are on free and reduced lunch programs. So we provide a variety of family support services through our Family Resource Schools Program. That's a direct service.
Does that mean it's city staff are doing the work?
That's right. That is a direct service that we provide to the community. In inclusive and welcoming community, for example, we run the Office of Human Rights. So when there are violations of discrimination based on our human rights ordinance or our failure to pay wages ordinance, we have a staff of people who take those complaints and review those complaints. We have our senior service program. So we operate and run two senior centers, and we have a variety of senior programs that we staff and we run and we operate. So that's in our role as a direct service provider, that's what that means. In our role as a funder, we have, and we will get to this slide around our funding sources, we provide community funding through several grant-making processes. One is the Human Services Fund. That's that $2.1 million fund that we allocate each year. We have the Youth Opportunity Fund, which you're also familiar with. Our Youth Opportunity Board gives out about $100,000 a year in annual grants for youth programs. We have the Human Relations Commission, which gives out about $30,000 a year in community cultural and community impact funds for a variety of diversity, education, and inclusion programs. And then recently, we also implemented the substance education and awareness grants through the recreational marijuana tax. So that's all funding that's going out to the community, that's part of this suite of funding to the community, in addition to the Human Services Fund. That's what you're most familiar with. So that's what this is representing, all sources of community funding, all of the direct services that we provided the community.
And then what's a lead partner? Give us an example of that.
So, for example, we recently, I'll give you an example you're familiar with, we recently partnered with Boulder County and three of our emergency homeless service providers to do the Homeless Services Collaborative, to figure out, well, how can we fund this partnership to help make sure that we have emergency services available to the community, and how are us and the county and the service providers partnering on, looking at, well, what kinds of outcomes are we looking for, what kind of data are we collecting, and how are we actually providing these services? So that's kind of our role as leader and partner, and that's where you're going to see, you know, the projects, the types of projects that we manage and coordinate with the community.
So I get the difference.
This is the big picture, but there's another slide, which I think is where you're, if I can get to this slide. So here's something is what you might be interested in. So these are investments by issue areas, and I'm going to go through these colors. So when you look at these bars, the blue bar is our direct services. The green, that light green bar, is our Human Services Fund. That's what you're most familiar with. That kind of salmon color is all of the other types of funding that we give out to the community, including our Youth Opportunity Fund, our Human Relations Commission funding, and contracts that we have with service providers that are outside of the annual fund round. And I'll talk about that in just a minute. And then you'll see that light kind of beige color is our substance education and awareness funding. That brown box are the rental subsidies that you approved for one-time funding with the Emergency Family Assistance Association, and one-time funding for the Edge Program this year. So when you look at, and I will talk about other city funding on homelessness in just a minute. So when you look at this whole picture, you're getting a picture of where resources are going in addition to just the Human Services Fund. So you can see on the blue, on direct services, we provide, for example, a lot of direct services under Aging Well, which is why we don't provide a lot of community funding, because we invest heavily in aging services through our senior centers and through the programs and services we offer through the senior centers. Whereas under homelessness, you'll see there's no blue at all, because we don't provide any direct services. We do partnerships in the community, and we do funding. So you can see how all these different mix of investments moves the bar. So let's look at health and well-being, because this is something you brought up as a concern. So when we look at health and well-being, and our green bar for funding, this is the bar from the Human Services Fund. But you can also see, in addition, we give out about $250,000 a year through our substance education and awareness grant to community organizations.
Is that under health and well-being?
Yeah.
Yes, that's under health and well-being. Substance use prevention and education. And then you can also see that salmon-colored part of the bar represents some additional funding from Youth Opportunity Fund, and also contracts that we have primarily with mental health partners, and those are about $300,000 a year. So you can see how when you put all of the city's investments up there, you can see it's more than just the Human Services Fund.
Zan, I've got a question. So can we talk about the homelessness bar here for a little bit?
Sure, so I can explain that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because that's the only bar with other city funding on it. And the reason for that is there is a substantial amount of other city funding that goes into addressing homelessness, and so that's why we have this up here, so you can see that for comparison purposes. So the brown, that brown bar under homelessness, those are the rental subsidies, the one-time funding for family, rental subsidies to prevent homelessness. And then the black kind of hash mark part of the bar is our programs, like the homeless outreach team, which is dedicated, from the police department, dedicated to homeless outreach. It's the municipal court navigator, and it is the average annual funding that's appropriated from housing, for the homeless specifically.
Which means LEHIL?
It could be LEHIL, it could be permanent supportive housing, shelter investments, capital investments for the shelter, things like that. So that includes funds coming from our housing program. And so that is why we put that up there, because that range of funding, in addition to the green funding that we give out for the Human Services Fund, it tells a more complete picture of all the sources of investment that the city's putting into these categories, knowing that these categories are a little fluid and permeable. So, for example, in this homelessness bar, we have the family rental subsidy program, but that could easily also fit under economic mobility and resilience, because it's resources going to families to prevent homelessness.
Does that answer your question?
So just for clarification, this goes to, like in our budget last year, we increased our funding specifically for FAP programs.
That's right.
To keep people up, and I guess this is upstream, from going into homelessness and kind of helping them to stay in place.
That's right. That's a very good example of an upstream investment related to homelessness prevention. It's moving resources upstream to keep people out of the emergency and crisis system.
So, I'm just curious from our process, do we want to let them finish their presentation and get to the questions for this section, and then we can do our thing?
If they could just explain the hatched black.
That's okay.
I still don't understand how that funding is distinct from the Human Services Fund.
Okay, so that black hash mark bar, are resources coming to address homelessness from outside of the department.
So who? What department?
So housing funds, that's average investment in housing funds to address homelessness. That includes the municipal court navigator, and it includes the, thank you, the homeless outreach team in the police department.
Police Department and Housing Department.
And those two programs, the municipal court navigator and the outreach team, they are not doing mitigation. So that is why you don't see any mitigation costs for addressing community impact or addressing homelessness in public spaces, because that's mitigation. That is not, those are not resources providing services and programs to help people out of poverty or homelessness.
So to clarify, the funds spent on mitigation are not included in any of these forms?
They're not included.
Good, thanks for.
So this is about services. Okay, can we move on, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, so I think we've already covered this. So in our community funding, where we're trying to get to, regardless of what we end up deciding the priority areas are, are driving in each area more resources to upstream investments, like the example we just gave of the family rental subsidies, data-driven decision-making, so those types of programs which have outcomes that are consistent with the goals, and more integrated and coordinated services in the community that we are funding to reduce duplication and overlap, and to increase the ease of accessibility for clients who are accessing So using this model that we were presenting around this shift toward economic mobility and resilience, so this is what we are currently funding in the Human Services Fund. So now we are back to just looking at this slice. Economic mobility and resilience currently is about 9% of the fund. If we targeted increasing this over a five-year phase-in period to 30%, that's a pretty big gap, that's a pretty big jump. Health and well-being currently is 48% of all of the Human Services Fund, and this is a pretty consistent percentage of the Human Services Fund over time. So roughly half of the fund has pretty consistently been devoted to health and well-being. Homelessness is currently at 24%, a good start at 17%, and Aging Well at 1. So when we look at kind of realigning where we are putting resources, although it is a pretty significant realignment from health and well-being, you can see the alignment for the targets are more in line with what you would see if you were interested in looking at a more equitable balance among all of the issue areas.
Can I ask you a question, though? But this is just, I mean, this is just dollars, and this doesn't, you know, so dollars were only like a third or 40% of our overall expenditure within your department, which of course is only a portion of overall expenditure of the state department. So it's a little, isn't a little bit, this is like some false precision here, I mean, because we're ignoring salaries and all the other direct services we provide. I mean, if you had another column there that said current and percentages on money that we, as a city, spend, direct or indirect, it would be different proportions, right?
Well, I don't know that it would be different proportions, because these percentages represent dollar amounts that we represent dollar amounts that we spend from the Human Services Fund.
But only dollars we spend from Human Services. So it ignores salaries, it ignores money we spend in other departments.
On health and well-being. Yes, because this just represents the Human Services Department. Yes.
So could I try and, and the slide here is the one that really helped me out. I think it's the next slide, actually, after this one, because it has it all laid out there. And what it says is, health and well-being is almost all funded by giving grants. Is that correct?
That's right.
Right? And so we don't have a lot of salary, city salary, direct city salary, in the health and well-being slice, which is one that I'm a little bit concerned about in particular, because the change in funding would impact largely, if I understand correctly, largely mental health services and somewhat physical health services.
And physical health services, yes.
Right. So one of the challenges I have with that is, don't people who are either on the verge of homelessness or in homelessness often use the mental health services?
Yes.
Okay, so in a way, these are arbitrary buckets, and I guess that's my big concern, is that's where the big cuts would come, is in particularly mental health services, but to some extent, physical health services. I just want to flag it, and it's all, it's going to come out of grants. So that's the reason that previous slide is interesting, sorry, the slide where you talk about how much Human Services Fund are going to change, because that is really focused on health and well-being.
So why don't you go to this next slide, that one, and let us, let her finish, and give your rationale, and then we'll dissect it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you look at this chart, you're looking at what is current in these different buckets, and then what would be proposed. So you can see the difference. So you can see economic mobility and resilience, there would be an increase in the funding that would be going to economic mobility and resilience. There would be virtually no change to a good start, virtually no change to Aging Well. Health and well-being would see a reduced amount, and there would be virtually no change to homelessness. So let me say something about these buckets, because I think it might get at what some of your concern.
And what happened to recommended on the last one?
And I'm going to talk about inclusive and welcoming in just a minute. So a good example in the homelessness bucket there is the EFA subsidies, rental prevention, or homelessness prevention rental subsidies. Part of that program, which has historically very good outcomes, they're data-driven outcomes, the program is focused on more upstream prevention and integrated services. One of those services that they are providing as part of the rental subsidy program around health prevention is required dental screenings for children. So there you see that in the homelessness prevention, there could be a way for our healthcare providers to actually partner with other providers in some of these other buckets that is still providing the services, but that are integrating those services more in other goal areas. Another example, for example, under good start, is in our Family Resource Schools program, we also provide dental screenings. We give, bring dental aid in to do dental screenings in that program. So I think we could think of these buckets as a little more malleable when people bring proposals forward that are more collaborative around wraparound services to meet a particular goal. So when we say we're cutting funding to health and well-being, that's not necessarily the case. Our health services could be partnered in some of these other goal areas, or even in health and wellness, where we are actually advancing a goal, for example, good start, through reducing non-academic barriers such as dental screenings or lack of access to primary care. So that's just another way of thinking of it. And I think another way of thinking of it as an option around the narrow and deep discussion, rather than a little bit all across the board, which is not going to move the needle in areas you may want to move the needle, would be to look at these areas, each one of these areas as important, equally important, and then pick one deep dive on one particular focus in each one. So, for example, good start, maybe it would be childcare subsidies, and that's it. Or maybe it would be a couple of areas. Under Aging Well, maybe there would be a very particular focus area. Under Health and Well-being, the same thing. So that's just another way of looking at the deep dive, and I think someone mentioned this, without making a large shift in resources from one area to another.
So I'm just curious from our, because we have a bunch of questions.
So welcoming and inclusive, so welcoming, inclusive community, the funds that we give out to the community in this area, so you'll see that little salmon-colored piece under funding, that's the HRC funding to the community. It's only about $30,000 to community agencies to spend on community cultural events and impact grants to the community. The blue part is direct services in our Office of Human Rights, Community Relations, and those types of programs. The funding associated with inclusive and welcoming community is not part of the Human Services Fund. That is allocated to the HRC to give those grants out. So welcoming, inclusive community, the HRC is developing a work plan related to this, and that work plan and resources needed for that work plan will be coming forward in May also, after council sees the results of the Community Perceptions Assessment on Safe and Welcoming Community. That's coming to you on May 30. So the department and the HRC will be developing a work plan around safe and inclusive and welcoming community at that time. So that's why you're not seeing proposed funding there, because it's not part of these funding streams. But it is part of our overall department goal.
Okay, how close are you to the end of this?
Okay.
Just curious, how many, well, because people are going to have questions for that slide, so should we just deal with them now, or are you close to the end of this section?
We're getting close to the end of this section. Okay.
So not opinions, but do people have clarifying questions about that slide?
Sam?
So I want to know, in terms of thinking about, you know, there's obviously going to be a change in federal funding for a number of things, including, one in particular that comes to mind is women's health services, and how, and obviously, there's an economic mobility and resilience tie-in there, and maybe that's where that's incorporated. But how do you, I didn't, I might have missed it in the packet, but I didn't see much discussion of that. And as I understand it, there's a huge concern that a lot of funding is going to be cut there.
Yeah, absolutely. And it is a concern, because we don't know what's going to happen with federal policy. I mean, some gains were made under the Affordable Care Act and the expansion of Medicaid, but there were still some pretty significant gaps, particularly in the affordability of plans and high deductibles and that type of thing. So yes, that's a, it's a significant concern. And if the pie stays the same size, right, if the pie stays the same size, another option is that we could continue funding the community the way we have in the past, but that was not council's direction to us previously. So if the pie stays the same, there's huge pressures in all of these areas. And I'm going to, I will show you a slide in just a minute around the gap in buying power for the fund. But yes, yeah, absolutely. So it's a very difficult choice. So we could reduce, if we really wanted to do something about the growing economic gap in our community, and put more resources to economic mobility and poverty reduction, we could take it from any one of these areas, which are critically important, or the only other option is to put new resources into the pie. So what we're trying to accomplish here is really focusing on something that is a core driver of intergenerational poverty, lack of educational achievement, interface with public services, really trying to drive more resources there when there's not a lot of choices to shift resources around. So when you look at this chart, and you can see, compare the current to the recommended, and you look at where health and well-being is under recommended, it's kind of getting in alignment with some of these other really important issue areas, like good start, which is also a fundamental driver for lifelong earnings and lifelong success, for kids to have a good start in school, Aging Well. I mean, if you look at the recommended, it's lining up. Now, if you think health and well-being is more important, or equally important, then we're still looking at a shift, because right now, in the Human Services Fund, health and well-being is 50% of the total pie. So I just, I'm just trying to point that out.
Question, and then we're going to finish this section, and then we're going to discuss.
I still have another one. And that is, from the health and well-being standpoint, too, and you may not have to address this here, but at some point, obviously, part of the funds from, from the cannabis sales and whatnot, were supposed to go towards health, education, and things like that. So I'd like to know how that plays into this as well.
Yes, so that's up there. You can see that. So on this, on this chart, the beige under health and well-being, that beige piece is, is the RMJ tax dollars.
Okay. And just, and that's an educational program, right?
Yes, that's Substance Use Prevention and Education.
And there's not the sugary drink.
Sugary drink's not in there yet. We haven't got to sugary drink yet.
Okay.
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 Clarifying question, or an opinion?
No.
Okay, and that, oh, and Mary.
I'm still not clear. Can you go back to the other? On inclusive and welcoming, you stated something like $30,000 comes through the Human Relations Commission. What's this other money used for, the blue? What is that used for?
Those are direct services. That's like our office.
Like what?
That's our Office of Human Rights, enforcement of our failure to pay wages ordinance, our human rights ordinance, our community mediation program, landlord-tenant mediation, and those types of programs. Those are in that inclusive and welcoming bucket, in the blue. Those are direct services, not funding we provide to the community. Those are services we provide to the community.
So somebody has an issue, they call up the city, and then you put effort into that issue?
Yes, that's right.
It would be helpful to just have that broken out, to see how that works?
For inclusive and welcoming?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Mary, clarifying?
Yes. So Karen, if I'm understanding correctly, with an emphasis on economic mobility and resilience, you could potentially have a proposal come in for providing nutrition classes, for example, that could fall under resilience, which is, you would typically think about it in health and well-being, but it could be resilience.
Sure. I mean, you know, there could be a collaborative proposal that is submitted that addresses, I'm just trying to think of what it would look like, where there's a suite of services that are related to reducing economic barriers to advancement. And maybe some of those could be health and wellness programs. It could be nutrition classes, could be dental screenings as part of a suite of services that are supporting a particular family, in addition to some focus on economic mobility, maybe employment training, or job training, or retraining.
Sam?
So with the EFA and Edge rental subsidy program, is that one-time funds?
Yes.
Will that be coming back to us in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, it will. So it's going to be up for renewal and be part of?
Yes, we will be asking for that to be ongoing.
It's kind of implied, because it's in the recommended, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, we're going to keep going. So just very quickly, this is what the actual dollar amounts would look like if they shifted across a five-year.
But it's the same thing that Barbara just said.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing. So community, community funding issues, resources to the community, we've already talked about these, talked about all of them, really, except buying power. Lot of community needs and demands. None of the programs that we fund in any of these areas are discretionary-type programs. They all, they all are providing some core, critical benefit to the community. So there's high competition for limited resources for all of these very important services. Buying power for community funding portion of resources that are going out has declined. So this is the buying power based on the city's CPI index that's calculated each year from 2001 for the Human Services Fund. So the buying power in today's dollars is 1.490 million, and the fund is 2.106. But over time, yes, so the fund has not, has not had any general fund increases since 2009.
Two questions. Go ahead.
Sure. In 2009, with the ballot initiative, the .15 dedicated sales tax that funded the Human Services Fund became unearmarked and part of the general fund. Now, prior to that, the city budgeted conservatively, so when we budgeted for what we thought would be coming into the Human Services Fund from the .15 sales tax, often, we underbudgeted and additional revenue would come in toward the end of the year that we would be able to give out to the community. So sometimes there was extra money, and sometimes there wasn't. But since 2009, basically, there has not been additional funding. So this gap, you see this gap between current buying power today and what the fund amount is.
Okay, clarifying questions, Bob and Mary?
Why?
Why?
Why have we been flatlined since 2009 and actually declining on a CPI basis? Maybe that's a question for people who've been on council for a long time, but why, why have we flatlined it when other?
Because we are waiting for a new Human Services strategy.
Oh, okay.
Here it is. Ta-da.
Okay.
Well, yeah, the. Well, yeah, we've stopped showing you in the overarching budget, the loss of buying power, because you've heard it over and over again. So this, there's a similar loss of buying power in all of our general fund dollars as well. And so we've been working toward providing the services that are the highest priority to the council. And around 2009, when the council started talking about human services, that's when we began talking about the deep dive and really focusing on impact areas. And so instead of just throwing money at the problem, we asked Karen to start working on the Human Services strategy. And there, it started in earnest about three years ago, and we are now at a point where for the 2018 budget, we are going to be able to recommend something that will either bring the dollars up farther than the 1490 that you see the buying power to be, but we don't want to just put money in and not know where it's going to go. And that's why we're here tonight, is we want to hear from the city council, what are your priorities? Do you agree with the priorities that we're talking about? Are there other funds, like the sugary beverage fund, that we're going to be talking about, and that I tried to pre-shadow for you at the council meeting last week, that we can use to bring these dollars back up? So we're getting ready to make some changes here, but we just need guidance through this strategy about where to go.
Just curious, Jane, would you happen to know, off the top of your head, setting aside the buying power, how would these numbers over the past eight or nine years, this flatline, compare to the general fund as a percentage? Would it be a declining share of the general fund?
I don't know the answer to that.
General fund, has the general fund gone up?
I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head. For a lot of years, and it's actually been switching a bit the last couple of years, we've seen the same chart for the general fund, right, with the buying, the effect of buying power is way lower. It hasn't kept up. I think the last couple of years, that buying power actually has gone up. And so it may be now that the Human Services Fund is not quite tracking it.
Right, it's not. It's not.
I guess the only other thing I'd say is, again, this is just the Human Services Fund. So the famous black bar that was up before of. of the half a million or million dollars that we put into homelessness from another fund isn't captured here. It's clearly Human Services. And if you captured it, then this number would go up a lot. I mean, this is one component of a much bigger whole.
Great. So let's get to the conversation we want to have. Do you have a clarifying question? Same as Bob's. Okay. All right. Get us to the questions.
Okay. All right, we're getting to the questions. So there are some possibilities to close this gap that we just talked about. Sugary beverage tax, this is also tax revenue that is targeted toward health intervention, treatment programs, health prevention, a whole variety of areas that would be appropriate for additional funding in the health and well-being category. And the same with the RMJ tax. We could be funding some mental health services, addiction and treatment services, or we could close the gap with an increase in the general fund appropriation to the Human Services Fund. But those are some possibilities.
Yeah, I had a question too. Go ahead.
Clarifying question on recreational marijuana tax. For a while now, that's been treated as one-time income, right? Have we gotten to the point where that is now repetitive income, or?
I don't think that we have made that leap yet, but this could be a year in which we do that. Of course, the status at the federal level may be different than it might have been a year ago. And so we'll be working with the budget team to figure that out.
Okay, because that, I mean, that would be very interesting to know how much that is and how much, you know, Bob will allow us to move that into recurring revenue.
ICOM.
ICOM, Bob ICOM, yeah.
Cheryl Patelli. Just as a reminder, Cheryl Patelli is our chief financial officer, and so she will be making that recommendation.
Clarifying question? Yep.
So Karen, you have up there the sugary beverage tax, health intervention and treatment programs. Obviously, that tax was brought forward by the community. Shouldn't the community decide and to what extent, you know, will we have a say in how it all goes?
Sure. And in the ballot language, it was pretty broad, but there was specific mention of health interventions, treatment programs, health prevention, a whole variety of ways that this sugary beverage tax could be spent. So it's just up there as an option, because we are looking at this.
I'm going to answer the question. Okay. The community brought it forward, and I do think that some community members that were supportive of it thought that they or a subset of their group was going to get to tell the city how that money should be spent. However, those dollars are tax revenues that come into the general fund of the city. And so the council will be making a policy decision about whether you want to use those dollars to achieve your highest priorities as you may adopt them under the Human Services strategy or other items, or if you would rather give that option to community groups to tell you how they want you to spend it. And so that's going to be a decision for you to make later in the year. Just as city manager, I'm going to recommend that the council use those revenues for the purposes for which they were passed by our voters, but that they are driven toward the policies that you adopt in the Human Services strategy. But you can make a different decision. And when we get to the budget time, then that will be the time for you to talk about that.
And I might add, it might not necessarily have to be either-or. I mean, the funding could be for city programs and community-based programs.
I just had a quick question about the marijuana tax. A subset of that, and I can't remember if it was a certain amount of year, goes to the drug education.
Right.
But there's more than that. And I'm just curious, do we have a rough sense of-
I have. I don't. I don't know what the additional revenue amount is, but we can find out.
We can do what we said we needed to with that, plus there's plenty over for more stuff. Is that correct?
Right. We'll have the budget department, the finance department, take a look at the dollars that we get in, keeping the $250,000 separate. And also, how much it costs to run that program, because as you know, there's a lot of inspections and enforcement associated with it. And then we can provide the information of any overage, so to speak, and where to drive those dollars will be a decision for council.
Right, okay. But this implies there would be overage, because you put mental health next to it. That was what I was trying to get at.
Right, that is an implication.
That's right. And I might just add, this gap represents about $330,000.
That's CPI change.
But I don't understand the math on that number.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, 600,000. Okay. All right. So our key community funding recommendations: allocate funding from the Human Services Fund according to these goals and focus areas. Shift some funding to economic mobility and resilience to about 30% of the fund over a five-year period. And also some changes we're recommending. These are more administrative changes. Allow longer grant cycles. Stop doing an annual grant cycle, particularly since we're asking our community agencies to look more toward long-term outcomes. We are looking to three- to five-year funding. And when you look at the agencies that we fund, we've been funding them for 20, 30 years. So it doesn't make sense to have the administrative burden for our agencies or for staff to be going through annual funding cycles. Allow our agencies to use some specified amount of resources toward data collection and evaluation and support innovative community partnerships and collaborative pilot grants in the community. So those are other recommendations that we're making. So.
Okay. Go ahead and go back to that.
So I'm going to go back to the recommendations.
Hey, let's start with the easy part, three.
Yes.
Oh, that's not easy? Well, go for it.
Okay. Well, just that, you know, the arts grants have moved to longer-term grants, and there have been some difficulties with those because there's this all-or-nothing situation. Instead of having, well, we didn't get anything this year. We'll get a crack at it next year, that you're out in the cold for three to five years. So I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, but I think you need to think carefully about that and how that works. And I know, like with the arts grants, we had some key community organizations that weren't funded. They didn't have a chance at it for years. They felt very unsupported by the city, and it impacted their ability to get their mission done. So there's some balancing that you have to do with that. So I just want to make sure you think about that.
Right. And there's always the opportunity to hold back some funding so that to get someone into the fund round who wouldn't have had an opportunity.
Right.
Other thoughts on number three?
I agree with Aaron on number three. I think you should hybrid that. Can I move up to number two, or do you want to do it number two first?
Does that, I just thought we just dispense with that. If that kind of covers people's thinking on number three. Because we're going to talk about number two a lot, so.
I'm okay with number three, but I agree about thinking about, can you stagger it? Is there some way that you can do something interesting? So they're two-year cycles, but you do part of the money for two years. So you're allocating, I know it's allocating next year's budget, but still in all, it allows you to go to that longer grant cycle, but still to have a grant every year or two. So anyway, I support it, but also agree with what Aaron said.
Yeah. Does that, most people nod on that? Okay. How about it?
So it's kind of hard to answer number two without a companion recommendation from you, and maybe you're not willing to make it tonight, to increase the Human Services Fund. If you were recommending, which I guess you're not, increasing the Human Services Fund, it'd be a lot easier to answer number two. But if you're saying the pie doesn't get any bigger, and you're happy with the pie, then I guess-
We're not happy with the pie. We will be recommending that the pie get bigger.
So can you make a recommendation tonight on how big you'd like to see the pie?
No.
No.
Because we have to go through the budget process, and you haven't seen all of the other things that could come forward in the budget process. So if tonight, the council said, we want $600,000 or a million more dollars to go to the Human Services Fund, you don't know today where you're taking that money from.
But I have the same problem, Jane, in the other direction. I can't answer number two without knowing how big the pie is, you know? Which is, should this part of the pie be this big or bigger? I don't know how big the pie is. I don't know if it's going to get bigger, smaller, or stay the same. So if you can't answer that, I can't answer number two.
Well, we can give contingent guidance, which is, well, no. I think the deal is, staff is trying to move towards some prioritization. The previous council did say, hey, let's not just be doing this willy-nilly. Add some, do some deep thinking and come back to us, and they have. I do think we can say, hey, we'd like to see an overall increase. This move, and we'd feel a lot better about this move, even though we think this is a priority, if we knew that we weren't going to be, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. That, I think, is fair guidance.
Right. And through the budget process, we'll bring back specific recommendations about the various increases, for example, to the Human Services Fund, plus extending the family rental subsidy program and maybe extending some of our other subsidy programs, so.
Okay, we got a lot of people in here.
I want to colloquy with Bob, if that's okay. So I want to ask a question that I'm hoping gets at your question. So the budget shown here is $5.7 million. If you go add up all six areas, it's $5.7 million, which includes our services and the money we get out and all that good stuff. So what has that been for the last three years? What has the Human Services budget all-in been for each of the last three years? Is that something we know?
Yes, yeah. You want the dollar amount?
Yeah, roughly. I'm just curious which way has it moved up? Has it moved down? Is it flat?
So for many, many years, the Human Services budget was flat along with the Human Services Fund. Where we've seen increases has been in the last year. So you approved two positions, one related to data analytics, which is a big focus for our strategy, is to develop metrics, outcomes, and an evaluation plan across the board. So you approved a position for that. And you approved a homeless services position, someone who's going to be focusing on our homelessness initiatives. Those were the first two FTE approvals in, I don't know, 15 years. So the Human Services Fund has been flat, but for all of this time, except for the additional .15 sales tax revenue. So if you're talking about three years, yes, we've seen some increases. You also approved the Family Rental Subsidy Program for EFA this year, one-time funding, and the Edge Funding, one-time funding. But if you're looking at a 10-year or 15-year view, it's not reflective of the last two years.
So 5.7 million includes these two new FTEs. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we can say it would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of 5.4 or 5.5 prior, for a long time. Okay? So if we were to look at the same kind of erosion challenge, where the value of that 5.5 million has eroded, if I were to use the same numbers that you used for your Human Services Fund, that would mean that the equivalent today is worth about $4 million over that same time period that you showed. So that, I just did proportions to get there. So that means that we've seen a significant change in the value, the buying power of the entire fund. So if we're going to have a new strategy, and we're going to be looking at a budget, I'm going to be wanting to say, how can we bring the buying power up to what it's historically been over the last 10 years? And my guess is that will be a couple million dollars to talk about. Now, I know that we have other things to look at.
Well, and also, I do want to say something. The staffing has remained consistent, except for the two new ones. And so the services provided by those staff members, the direct services, have stayed the same. So I, just the way I would do math, I don't think you can take the whole 5.7 or 5.5 million and say that has deteriorated because a segment of it, the direct services segment, has not deteriorated over time.
But the cost could have gone up. So in other words, if salaries and benefits and whatever changes, so it's not going to be a, you know, those aren't going to be 100%. They're going to have cost. Anyhow, that's just my way of saying that I do think that we need to be careful that this erosion doesn't continue. And if the whole reason for the Human Services strategy is to be able to do that, then I'm going to say contingent on the ability of us to adjust that, I would support number two, but not at the expense of the health and wellness. Maybe some expense. But really, I think what we don't want to have happen is mental health services, which are largely provided to people who are in great need of support, or physical health services, get really eroded because we're just allowing the big picture to get worse, and then we're having to reallocate around that. So I guess, there you go.
Okay, we have Mary, Andrew, Lisa, Aaron.
So I'm okay with number two, and I agree mostly with what Sam just went over. The one thing that we haven't really considered is how we would, would we be able to take the marijuana money and the sugary beverage to make up that difference? In which case, you know, the picture isn't as dark as it's being painted right now, if we do that. So for that reason, I'm okay with number two.
Okay, Andrew.
So I'm not okay with number two. I think that Sam made a great point earlier, which is you can do a deep dive without doing a deep dive on a subject area. You can sort of, you know, within a subject area, you can go deep with a specific program, entity, whatnot, and accomplish your goals. But I just don't, I'm not seeing the justification of harming another area, particularly where, and I think this idea that, well, if we increase the budget, it's okay. The fact is, is that our buying power in all these areas has declined. So if we increase the budget and we shift it to economic mobility and resilience, health is still lost a tremendous amount already, and we're not gaining any recovery. And so to me, I, to date, haven't, I mean, again, we're in a vacuum here. We're talking really broad strokes. We haven't gone into detail, but I'm not comfortable without more detail, understanding, you know, how we're going to benefit one subject area, for example, over health and well-being.
So I might point out, too, if we just did a deeper dive into each area and really had a focus in each area, we would also be cutting programs and services from agencies. So either way, either one of those options, we're going to be focusing in a more limited way and not funding everything that we're funding now, unless we make a decision that we want to continue funding all the types of programs and services that we're funding today.
I certainly understand the idea that hard choices are going to have to be made. What's not apparent to me is why health gets cut in exchange effectively for economic mobility, particularly in light of where I think the federal government is going right now.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a significant concern, a more core issue for getting people to more, higher lifelong earnings, not having to rely on public subsidies, general health and well-being, so they don't need those services, is to improve their economic condition. And that's not to say health and well-being, or Good Start, or aging well, or any of those other areas aren't critically important, too. But poverty is a fundamental driver of all kinds of social welfare issues, and we put a paltry amount of funding into that right now. So if we are expanding the pie, we could simply say we're going to expand the pie in economic mobility and resilience and it not have to come at the expense of some of these other really important and critical areas. But right now, 50% of all of our community funding through the Human Services Fund is going to health and well-being. It's a really big chunk. And then when you add on our substance education and awareness grants and our contracts in the health field, it's much larger. So this is in no way to say, I don't think health and well-being is critical, because it's absolutely critical. But we are, if the pie's going to stay the same, we have to make some critical choices. And maybe that's, maybe we would continue funding the Human Services Fund in the areas that we currently do and not make any changes.
Yeah, I have to agree with Bob and with Andrew on this. I think it doesn't take a crystal ball to know what's going to happen at the federal level with regards to health insurance, healthcare, women's- level with regards to health insurance, healthcare, women's services, medical and dental issues. And yes, mental is part of it, but I was impressed by the surveys, and by the demographics, and the disproportionality of kind of what people thought was really important. I'm not convinced to shift funding into economic mobility and resilience unless I have a little better understanding of what are we doing. And I don't at this point. I also think, and in reading the memo tonight, one thing that became very, very clear is that livable wages are key to everybody's survival. And I'm going to bring up the self-sufficiency wages, and I assume this is not going to come from human services. But I think people who are working a full-time job need to earn the wages that they deserve. And unfortunately, even in Boulder, Colorado, we aren't providing those, not in the city, and not in our private businesses. So, from my perspective, I'm not interested in shifting funding to economic mobility and resilience at this point in time. I'd need to know a lot more. And I guess I would also like to have a comeback, maybe in August or September, when we have a better understanding of what the federal administration is going to do. And I don't think any of us have much of a clue as to what's going to come down the pike from the federal government, and how that's going to offend, affect our current budget, so.
Aaron.
Well, I thought Andrew said it well, and I share most of his, agree with most of his points. And just one thing I wanted to highlight in terms of the danger of cutting back on the health and well-being segment is the large proportion of that that's devoted to mental health services, which I think are some of the most underfunded and under-prioritized services in our society. So, I would hate to see those cut. So, if the pie stayed the same, I think the current allocation makes a fair amount of sense. But I very much want to see a bigger pie. So, I know we're not deciding that tonight, but I'll just put that out there, that in the next budget cycle, it's, for me, a very high priority to increase these dollar amounts substantially. So, we'll have to weigh the various priorities when budget cycle comes around. But I'm hopeful that we can really increase these numbers. And if we increase the numbers, then we have more flexibility. And I would certainly support more than a sixth of new dollars going to economic mobility and resilience, so that it can bump up, get significant new funding. You've made a compelling case for the role that it plays. I wouldn't say all of it should go to it until it got up to 30%, but it could be featured in new dollars. And the other thing on that budget cycle is that hopefully, we can look at our different funding sources, I'm sure we will, potential marijuana taxes, sugary drinks taxes, look at them holistically, and about how we can accomplish all these human services goals.
Yeah, and, so, okay, I'm next.
I hadn't finished my thing. I was just going to say that I certainly hope that we look at the sugary tax, and I totally agree with Jane, that the city should have the say in terms of how those, or maybe it could be a combination with the community that helps, but this is a city of Boulder tax. And I would hope that we have the lion's share of how that money is spent. And I certainly hope we could put some of the proceeds from that tax into the physical health, and, you know, insurance, medical, dental, even mental health.
So, I'm going to jump, oh, I was just going to say my piece, which is, I guess I'm in a slightly different place than folks, which is, everybody says affordability is what is killing them. And I think, when I look at how little we spend on trying to address that, keeping in mind that those buckets are very fluid, it seems to me that it makes good sense to increase our investment in addressing poverty. So, I guess I want to support the staff in that. That doesn't mean that I don't appreciate health and wellness, but I guess I want to say, yeah, let's address poverty better. Everybody is struggling with that, I shouldn't say everybody, but that's the theme we hear all the time. Now, and then the other piece of it is both marijuana and the sugary drink tax lend themselves towards health and wellness funding. So, I also think, much more than poverty reduction, so, to me, those are the logical places to kind of replace health and wellness funding while we shift some more into poverty. So, to me, that works well together, and might be the path forward. The one thing I guess I would say, though, now that I made the case for poverty, is the food rebate tax, where, what we talked about not going really broad, I mean, getting some people 80 bucks more a year seems to me not the best way to address poverty. So, I guess, but I am interested in thinking about how we could better do that, and maybe it's helping defray people's healthcare costs when the federal system goes, you know, who knows what it is, but I guess I would like to look meaningfully at what those programs are.
And the food tax rebate is very low. It's, the food tax rebate is geared toward disabled, low-income seniors and families, and it's a very low.
Okay, so that's pretty small. That's not the major tool.
So, yeah, it could, it could make a difference. It could make a difference in people's lives if the rebate were larger.
Yes.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Can I colloquy on that? Well, and just, I'd just put in a word for that program. I think it's a valuable one, and grocery sales taxes are one of our most aggressive taxes. So, I was excited to see that you were thinking about expanding that program from a dollar perspective and a number of people reach, so I don't want to, I want to make sure.
Yeah, because right now, it doesn't feel like it's doing its reach. Okay, we had Mary, and then are we, maybe we're done with this section?
So, I wanted to agree very strongly with what Suzanne just said, and I also wanted to remind everybody, you know, we talk about welcoming and inclusiveness, and this is going back to the beginning of the presentation, where who is disproportionately affected by poverty? And if we don't address that as a priority, and think about health and well-being, I think, you know, there are other sources of funding to address the health and well-being, but I do think that if we address poverty, if somebody is being lifted out of poverty, they therefore have less health issues, fewer health issues, fewer mental health issues, because poverty does cause a lot of health issues. So, I think there's a direct link with bringing people out of poverty, and also, that, a result of that is better health, too. So, that's how I'm thinking about it. And then, as far as the market bucks goes, I agree with, the program seems sort of like it needs to be restructured.
The food tax, the food tax, yeah.
Yeah, the market bucks, I didn't, but that was my thinking, is that it, maybe that money could be put towards the market bucks instead, in a program that's already being utilized fairly well.
Really quick, because I'm going to agree with Suzanne and Mary mostly. I mean, for me, yeah, there's kind of infinite needs out there, and we probably should increase the funding in general, but I think in this realm, as in housing, we really need to stick to our guns and look at the longer term. And it's very hard to do that, because it's very hard not to deal with the immediate issues, there's real people involved, and that makes it really tough. But if you're ever going to get yourself out of the cycle, you have to deal with the longer-term issues. And I think that's what this is about, is trying to deal with some of those longer-term issues that cause all the other problems that are, always need, you know, infinite amounts of funding, and we're never going to fix them until we deal with some of the underlying, longer-term problems. We're not going to solve it. Look, nobody's going to solve these problems, but we can make a dent.
Okay, anything else on this? I'm not sure we've given you clear direction, but at least you have a variety of opinions.
I'm going to ask you again shortly, so.
A lot of people want to increase the funding.
Okay. We'll take a straw poll shortly, so just to be clear, so.
On this?
Yep.
Okay, well, straw polls. What's your question? Which one?
On the first two.
Allocate our funding according to our goals?
I'm not sure where it kind of landed.
How can anybody disagree with one?
Well, can you clarify more what you mean by one? Is that, what's the specific meaning of that?
So, six, those six goal areas.
So, just put them in those six buckets?
Yep, yep.
But not about the percentages?
No.
Okay, this should be an easy question. All those in favor, funding towards your goal?
Okay.
Is there anything that we're excluding by that?
No.
Because everything, everything we can think of goes on those six goals, okay?
Yep.
I believe in everything, good.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not sure that was a good one, but okay, got us warmed up. So, if you're going to.
So, for us to bring back budget recommendations that more clearly articulate some of the things that we've talked about, we need to know a little more clearly about whether you want to have a focus area in economic mobility and resilience or not, and to bring back with the budget how we close the gaps across the board.
So, can I ask you a question about focus? Because right now, it's such a small part. If you move it to 30%, it's still not a focus area. It brings it more in line with the other ones.
It brings it more in line with the other areas.
So, I guess, what I would say is, are people interested in increasing our investments in addressing economic mobility and resilience?
Can we say if we increase the overall pie? Because that's really where I'm going to be on this.
Yes.
So, I mean.
Okay, so we can amend that to say.
So, there may be plenty of people who would say it doesn't need to increase for them to support that, but for me to support it, I'm going to want to see us not penalizing other areas, and rather raising all boats, rather than just shifting over. So, I just want to be clear on what the question is.
Okay, well, that's, you gave a clear answer, so.
That's helpful.
Right. I think we should do it either way, but I think we have to shift more slowly if we're not adding. So, I mean, heck, yeah, I'd rather add to the pie. The deal is, we are adding to the pie. We're adding recreation marijuana tax and sugary drink.
And if we can see that, that's what I would ask, is that I would want to see how we're going to use those sources of funding to backfill anything that we would be shifting out of the health and well-being.
But the whole idea is to increase the percentage towards poverty.
So, if we, you can do that. If you're bringing in additional sources, you can reduce what comes out of the Human Services Fund and allocate more of that over to economic mobility. So, I guess, I just wanted to express my clear opinion. I can vote for this, but it would be only if.
Well, I wonder if we have, do we have two straw polls? One that says, do we increase funding, or increase funding for economic mobility if we have additional funding? And the other is, do we increase funding even if we don't have additional funding? Those might be two questions.
Okay, I think it'll be somewhere where we don't get to, we won't have as much, it sounds like we can increase funding somewhat, because we have a, we have two taxes coming online, so that's going to happen. The question, it probably won't be enough to cover everything. So, I think it'll be more like, anyhow, it'll be a hybrid, is what I mean.
And can I make one quick point about the sugary drink tax? I think the expectation of the community is not that that will just backfill existing programs. I think people are expecting some new stuff out of that, just to make that point.
Right, but a lot of it has to do with, like, childhood obesity and things that.
It would be in that larger bucket. I'm just saying, I think if you just filled an existing program with that money and didn't start anything new, I don't think you'd be meeting the community's expectations.
Okay, ask us what you want.
I've got it.
Oh, you got it?
I've got it.
Okay, so I do think we're somewhat divided on only ifs, and, but, we all want to increase funding at some.
So, there'll be options.
Good enough? Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Oh, we just did.
We just did.
Lisa, that's what all those comments were about.
Do you want to, do you want to answer?
No, 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 she did answer them, whether she realized it or not, she was answering them.
I didn't answer any of them, and I don't, I personally.
Yes, you did. You agreed with Andrew.
I agreed with Andrew.
Yes, but it doesn't come to a final straw poll as to what we're doing. I agreed with Bob and with Andrew on this, so.
I think there's actually three questions, I think people asked two.
Okay, what's your other question?
I agree with Andrew. I would say no to two, no to two. That's, unequivocally, no. I mean, I can move in the direction of where Andrew was, which is the middle, I mean, I'm doing.
It's not just me.
So, yeah, I kind of, where Lisa and Andrew are, I'm not sure that I would, I would even say yes to two, subject to, because this is such a hypothetical question, how much more? I mean, I don't know what that means. I kind of like, I think Aaron, that guy says something about, maybe it could be a little bit more than the others increase, but they all, all the votes need to rise, and maybe this boat rises a little faster. I mean, this is so hypothetical and theoretical that it's just, this is so premature.
Okay, I don't think it's premature.
It's policy. That's what policy is. It's pretty hypothetical.
But I don't even know, but I don't know it falls under economic mobility. Give me a list of programs.
Well, they're listed in the focus areas in your packet on page 15. So, you would get a flavor of what those focus areas and the types of programs, not the specific programs or agencies, but the types of programs that would be funded, that emerged as priority-type programs in those focus areas on page 15.
Here, can, here's my problem with all this. This is a study session. We don't have the information. I'm concerned that we say, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, and then we're stuck with a budget that we're not comfortable with, when it comes back to us in July or August. And I guess I would like to know, what are, what are we agreeing to? And I also, like I said, have a problem with straw polls, vote, whatever, in a study session.
Okay, you're going to have to jump in here. Deals, we're not discussing the budget tonight. We want to discuss the budget, they're not ready to discuss the budget. So, we're talking general.
Well, we need some direction to be able to bring back a budget proposal for you.
Things that need to go up, and things that, so.
Can I just say on page 15, where you just directed us, under economic mobility and resilience, one of the bullet points there is equitable access to basic support services, including healthcare. So, it's in there. If the concern is healthcare, I would think that a lot of the comments that have been made tonight regarding the concerns about where the federal government is going would fall under that. So, it's covered under economic mobility and resilience.
But then, we're not cutting, I mean, the thing, part of this is just sending a message to the public, too. And, you know, so the issue is, are we cutting health or not? And I guess the, you know, it's, that, I saw that as well, Mary, but it's clear as mud. And that's part, that's part of the problem, is that we just don't know what's going to happen. And I get the idea that we're talking policy here, but I think what I'm hearing is that, is that health and wellness are very important to the community, and that they may be in jeopardy further because of the federal government and the way they're going, and all, you know, you can, you can argue that poverty causes health issues, you can also argue that health issues cause poverty. And so, you know, it's a cycle. So, again, I just, I think we need more information.
I do have a, okay, you go, and then I got to go.
I just want to make a comment. So, one of the things I'm struggling with is, sure, it's policy, but you make policy through the budget, right? That's a really important way that you make policy. And so, I can look at slide 19, which has been the one I've been staring at all night, and say, if there were another $400,000 in the kitty, we could put that towards economic mobility and get to where we've said, and we could even have another discussion that said we could shift a little more out of health and well-being, and bring them up to be equal to each other, or whatever. But that would be concrete for me. What's not concrete for me is how much more will be in here, if any, what the sources are that we can and can't use it for, and, you know, how we can improve economic mobility and resilience without hacking at health and well-being. So, that's why I feel like if we have more information and options proposed to us when staff comes back, it will be a lot easier to have this discussion.
Right, I agree with you, and what you were just talking about is what I'm hearing the conversation go to, is that in the perfect world, if we had more dollars, it would be awesome to put them toward economic mobility. And at the same time, as we prepare the budget, let's try to maintain the level of health and well-being funding that we currently have, so we're not reducing that. So, to me, that's great direction on what you want to see as we prepare the budget, which, you're right, is the ultimate policy document that you approve every single year. So, I feel like we've got really good direction on this, and that we don't need to take any more straw polls, so we will find some way to help you understand that when we get to the budget.
Great. That sound good? Some of us are a little more enthusiastic about increasing funding on poverty. I just need to say that, because I am enthusiastic about that, so, okay.
Yep. Okay, we're going to move from community funding to our direct services. Just quickly, we did a pretty thorough assessment of our direct services, those services we provide directly to the community. We assess them for alignment with these goals, these six goal areas. We assess them for alignment with these goals, these six goal areas, and there was pretty good alignment there. We did a peer city review and organization review of what other communities are doing in human services. We looked at best practice and innovation. We also looked at all of our programs for utilization and demand and cost recovery. And, just to get to our results and recommendations, as a result of, of all of that, we identified some opportunities to improve our alignment with the goals and focus areas that we identified, including economic mobility and resilience. One was, as we've already talked about, expanding and retooling a bit the food tax rebate program. Either the eligibility criteria, the amount of the tax rebate, the eligibility criteria, the outreach to get a larger percentage of eligible people in our, our community to participate. Realign and expand our childcare subsidies. So when, when we talk about the self-sufficiency scale and the self, the self-sufficiency index, and we look at those specific areas that self-sufficiency standard is built on, which our living wage is also built on, we look at those four areas of costs in families and individuals' budgets, childcare subsidies, food, transportation, and housing, our four key areas, where there are expenditures that keep people below a living wage. So expanding our food tax rebate program really helps people with getting cash back for the tax that they pay on food. This is a great program. We, we should expand it. Childcare subsidies, now they're very, very high-cost item for families. We have a childcare subsidy program which helps close the gap on subsidies, but also helps fund families who are very low-income but not eligible for federal childcare assistance by virtue of maybe their residency status. So this is another area we could directly impact people's bottom-line budgets. Continue the FFA family rental subsidy program. This is a great program. There's also cash in, or the equivalent of cash into a budget. We're also going to be looking at reducing some senior services, social enrichment programs, and reallocating resources to what we know will be future demands around case management, information and referral, assistance with aging services. And, we will be bringing forward amendments to the Human Rights Ordinance around, to add two protected classes. One being nondiscrimination for source of income and for immigration status, which at council meeting regarding sanctuary cities, our city attorney said we, we could address effectively immigration status under our Human Rights Ordinance. So we'll be, we'll be bringing that back.
Could you explain source of income a little more?
So source of income would be discrimination based on what a person's income is. For example, if they're on federal assistance, social security disability. So based on their source of income, they may, they may be discriminated against either in housing or...
So would this get at some of the issues we have right now, is Section 8 housing and, landlords not taking perfectly good Section 8 vouchers and...
They're discriminating based on that, yes.
So would that address this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So now we're to, these are the questions for council. We've already answered...
Ask them. If you, if we already answered them, don't ask them again.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, direct service recommendations. So, these are our recommendations. We just want feedback from you about these recommendations. Should we explore expansion of the food tax rebate program? Explore expansion of childcare subsidies? Continue the family, the FFA family rental subsidy program?
Can you just explain the senior one a little bit more?
Yeah. So this is really more at a programmatic administrative level. There are some programs and classes in our social, social program offerings, social enrichment classes that we offer, that maybe we don't have a high demand or high participation rate in, which we would discontinue and re-appropriate or reallocate those resources to where we have an increased demand, such as in case management and information about how do you enroll in Medicare and those types of things.
So you're talking about better management area programs?
Yep. So the, the, the key ones up here are the food tax rebate program. Should we explore expanding that? Expand childcare subsidies? Continue the family, FFA family rental subsidy program? And add these two protected classes to the Human Rights Ordinance?
And I, I'm assuming this is based on feedback from the community about their greatest needs, right?
Yes. Yeah, on our direct services, yes.
You might disagree with these?
Question. On the two protected classes, the immigration status I get, sources of income, can you give an example of that?
Social security disability.
Okay.
It's like people that won't take Section 8 vouchers.
Section 8 has...
I was just trying to understand the discrimination end of it, though, like, so, so somebody would be discriminated against because they...
Yes. Because they won't, they won't take their, their voucher or their disability in, income is, for their rent.
Okay. Yep.
So one question on the direct services, and maybe this is a longer-term issue. The, the senior centers we have, are we, I mean, the West Senior Center, certainly something needs to be done with one of these days.
Yeah.
But are we taking kind of another look at service provision along those lines, whether that's really the, the modern way to provide services to seniors, and it's really what people, especially people in Boulder want?
Yes. So actually, through our community engagement process, we did get, get feedback about that. So just a couple of things. What, what we want to realign our direct services toward is, I guess, to the, also to the 60 to 75-year-old population, particularly at the West Senior Center. So at East, we have the 60-plus population that is actively engaged because it's attached to the recreation center. So for those people who don't really feel like a senior or don't see themselves as a senior, our West Senior Facility doesn't really offer a lot for them because it's not attached to a, a recreation facility. So we are really looking at expanding the types of programming that more active 60 to 75-year-olds are looking for, and we've already started doing some of that reprogramming. In our community engagement process, people were, were very supportive of having an intergenerational facility, not just a senior center. So when we look at the West and Civic Area Plan programming, or we look at the Boulder Community Hospital, the vision for our range of services is to have a one-stop shop and all of our programs co-located, because right now we're in two different locations. So we have our children, youth, and family programs over on Spruce Street. We have our senior programs in our administration over at the West Senior Center. But we could provide a much better intergenerational programming at a center that was more intergenerational and not just focused on seniors. The other, the other thing at the West Senior Center, we have Meals on Wheels, who provides the congregate meals there, and we have the, the kitchen there. And in a, whatever happens with the West End planning for Civic Area or the hospital, that partnership with Meals on Wheels, we would not continue that, that partnership. They provide a very valuable service. But in the space that we need to really expand the programming for seniors that we need, and to have co-located services for a one-stop shop for the community, that's a lot of space. And it's a very specific kind of meal service. You know, best practice, particularly for the elderly, is moving toward a range of options for food service. Vouchers, ability to, to be able to access food that meets your medical and your daily needs, which is a little different than a congregate care, single prepared meal.
Cool. All right. I think we're good.
People good?
Yeah.
We're good.
What else?
Okay. Well, that's it. You've answered all the questions.
Can I give one more piece of feedback?
Yep, sure.
I would just request that, as you move towards the final study, strategy, sorry, the final strategy, that you consult closely with the human services providers, because of course they're doing so much of the, the work that we need in the community. So, and I, my understanding is that the last set of recommendations, there weren't, they weren't brought in on those before the packet came out?
No, they, they weren't brought in on this particular recommendation, but we, we have met with them on a couple of occasions about the overall goals and direction that we're heading in. But no, not specifically on this shift.
Understood. So, yeah.
Economic mobility and resilience.
Be, be great to bring them in before the next steps.
Oh, yeah. Otherwise, we'll hear about them. We'll hear from them at the budget, so better to have that conversation early.
I'm not sure it will change, but, hearing from them, but...
So, this isn't directly related to one of these questions out, up there, but it did jump out at me as I read through this. And it had to do with the grant-making that the HRC does, the $30,000, which you said it was for community cultural and impact grants. And to me, that sounds a lot like, similar to, kind of related to the arts and culture grants and the neighborhood grants. And in a way, it's sort of doing kind of the same thing, but kind of in a different place, in a sort of othering manner. And I'm, you know, I was just thinking, maybe that needs to be considered.
Yes. And, and actually, we do look at the, the community cultural grants, and the HRC does too. And if they more appropriately fit that funding stream, they recommend people to that funding stream. So they're not, when we talk about culture, we're talking about something different. We're talking about our diverse cultures and activities, like, say, the Asian Pacific Alliance Festival, or those types of festivals on the community event side, and then, then things in the community that actually impact or have an impact on our underrepresented communities or communities of color. So culture, it's defined just a little differently, and there, there actually isn't a lot of overlap but, between what the arts grants do and what the HRC grants do. The, the HRC is really focused on bringing diverse communities together, and recognition and awareness of all of the diverse, diversity in the cultures that we have, and providing some funding to be able to support the, those types of programs in the community. So it's very focused on creating this welcome, welcoming, inclusive community, and it's a very limited pot of money. And so as we look toward the developments of the inclusive and welcoming community work plan, based on the community perceptions assessment, we'll be bringing recommendations on behalf of the HRC for the budget related to that also.
Sweet. So I think the next topic, the last topic, will actually take more time than, well, anyhow, I suggest we move on, if we want to get out of here by 9:30, I guess, unless anybody else has, we don't have to fill this time, because we're going to talk about the creek.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we had Commissioner Nikhil Monkukar here, and he's not here anymore, but he's on the HRC, and he contributes quite a bit. So I just wanted to acknowledge his presence.
Okay.
These are just some of our next steps.
Okay.
So we will be coming back on May 16th, the draft strategy. We'll be aligning the recommendations, budget recommendations with the budget process, but you'll be hearing about those on May 16th. And also, we'll be developing metrics, outcome measures, and evaluation plan for programs and services and community funding, and...
Excellent. Thank you for this. I know it's been a long time coming.
Okay.
Hey.
Great. So then, the next section that we're going to talk about is the response to encampment impacts along Boulder Creek. And, that's going to come up. I'm going to make the presentation, but we need to put a thumb drive in, yeah? So that we can show you a few important photos.
Quick, get cookies.
Yep. A few minutes ago, about an hour ago, we emailed this presentation to you, so you could also pull it up on your, do you want me to wait? Yeah. Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
[music]
regard to encampment issues along Boulder Creek. And of course, you've had a number of people emailing you and certainly showing up at regular meetings about what's going on there. So that's what the focus is of our presentation tonight, and responding to some of the requests that we've had from council members and the community around this issue. We will be back on May 9th, when Karen returns to talk about the homeless working group. And that will be the time to talk about sort of the bigger issues around homelessness. Not tonight, unless you want to get into it. So we do have several staff members here who are most familiar with what's going on. So I'm just going to start out by showing you a little bit about what the encampments look like. I think you know that pretty well. A thing for you to know is that our staff, our park staff is out every single day cleaning up not only these areas, but also our parks. And we have 1,500 acres of parks, and we work through those every single day, cleaning up situations that not only occur on Boulder Creek, but occur in other places. The work that we do occurs during the daylight hours, and our staff is instructed to clean these areas in teams of three or more, and they wear proper equipment, because in some cases, there are dangerous sharps and other matters found in these encampments. Staff does not enter active encampments, so if people are still there, we will not enter to clean them up. And we certainly coordinate all of our clearing with the police department. So in recent days, can you go on to the next one? We've been looking at all of our parks in the civic area, and the map up there shows some of the areas that we've been looking at, infrastructure, to make sure that we've got the right infrastructure there, and to make sure that we can provide the services that are needed. And we've walked through all of the areas that show with a dot. We also are looking at installing park enhancements in various areas, and we want to refresh the signage. So you can see some of the signage that we have up there, but we want to provide more awareness about existing ordinances. And in the civic area itself, we'll be adding wayfinding and other information on the other side of these signs wherever possible. And then finally, the last photo here shows how much trash we are typically collecting in this area on a normal day. So we talked in the report that we gave you, and that I know that you all read, about our 2017 enhanced response. And so these are the things that we've started. Additional patrols are occurring in the civic area. The police department started that on February 4th. In your packet, you are, you were given an estimate of how much it costs. It's about $4,000 extra a week. We also are recommending that we expand our services with more frequent trash and waste... Again, permitting requirements were, were required. It was built off-site, it was shipped and connected. It's very durable, it's got concrete walls, it had to comply with all regulations, including floodplain regulations. Again, an issue for us along Boulder Creek. The next one is the lovely facility out at Valmont City Park. This was specially built for the site. This was a higher cost, $375,000, all in. The restroom has a small maintenance garage in the rear, it has solar power. Again, floodplain had to be considered when we developed it. And so, now, we want to show you one that Denver is currently piloting down, downtown Denver. So, this is essentially a flatbed truck with restrooms on it, it's movable. It is staffed by Denver, and the work that we've done to understand how they, they staff it indicates that it's about $16,000 a month to maintain this unit, and that's with staffing. What Denver does is they make it available in the downtown core in the evenings for various hours, and they move it a couple of times a week. The latest availability that they have it open for is midnight, so it's not open for an entire 24-hour period, they close it at midnight. But for the most part, they've got more than one of them. They largely close between 9:00 and 10:00 p.m. So, those are some ideas for some of the sanitary solutions that we've been hopeful for.
What are the staff doing?
The, the staff make sure that people are not locking themselves into the stalls. So, they make sure that the stalls are remaining safe, and hopefully, that people are not conducting criminal activities inside the stalls. And so, they're trying to make sure that everyone that comes there feels like, whether they're a, a single adult, or a family member, or a little kid, that they are going to feel safe in that location.
Do you know how much just that facility costs? I mean, we're just talking about staff right now, $16,000 a month.
I believe that Yvette may know how much the cost was.
I'm working on it. We have asked the city of Denver, who's running this through their public works department, to provide us with that information.
Use a mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. We've asked for that information, we're still trying to gather that, as well as how long it took them to procure it. At this point, I'm unclear as to whether they're running it with city staff, or with a vendor. They may be leasing the equipment, and so we're trying to figure all of that out. This is a very new pilot for them, and we still have a lot to learn, and we are in contact with them, as well as other cities in the front range, to best assess not only how it's working, but how we might work together to leverage our, you know, collective purchasing power.
Thank you.
Right. So, we do have one more slide, I think that is a question, maybe for you? Yeah. Do you want us to pursue a more permanent restroom solution outside the high-hazard zone, or a more flexible option, similar to the Denver example, to improve public sanitary facilities along Boulder Creek? Our recommendation would be that you ask us to look into it further, and that we will come back to you with that. But we don't, but if you don't want us to move forward, because the cost can be high, and we were just trying to explain different scenarios that have higher cost, we don't know if you want to do that or not.
Are, are you asking A versus B, or are you asking us to authorize you to look at A and B?
B.
What are the questions, Tita, that it looks like you're asking us between permanent and...
Oh, right, yes. Right. I'm sorry.
So, do you have a recommendation between the two?
My recommendation would be the more flexible option, similar to the Denver example.
And just, just to clarify, the looking, the part of the civic area planning is down the road, that's not part, that's not in that solution?
That's, no, that's not in that solution. So, we're, we're still working on essentially Phase 2 of the civic area, and Phase 2 is going to include more permanent restrooms in the civic area. The thing that I've been hearing from council and the community is that the, a location as far away from the Ebon Fine Park area, the 9th Street Bridge area, is, does it work as a good solution for people that may be walking or resting in that area?
Okay. Any other clarification, questions before we give our opinions? Yes. Aaron.
Jane, I, I wanted to, to ask you a question about those temporary facilities that, that shall not be named, that you mentioned at the beginning, and that you feel are totally inappropriate. But we, I mean, we do have those in the creek area sometimes, right? I mean, for certain events.
We do have them for events. We have them in locations where they are more able to be serviced, and so, it, it's very difficult to put them in locations closer to the creek, where they can't be serviced. We also put them in more visible locations, where folks don't vandalize them, or throw them in the creek. And if we put them in more remote locations, that is something that is, I would have to say, likely to happen.
Okay.
Because it has in the past.
What about the possibility of, of putting them in, in more visible locations, rather than more remote ones?
The, the problem with more visible locations is that there aren't many, or any, outside of the high-hazard zone, unless they're far away. And the point is to have them not be far away. So, I, I might have to turn this over to Yvette, because she does know more about it, but I want you to know that this is not the Parks and Recreation Department's problem. It's a citywide issue, and we all want to own a very positive solution here.
Absolutely.
Well, so, for example, Justice Center might not like it, but the parking lot right by the Justice Center is kind of right next to the creek. So, I guess a place like that, where you're taking up a parking spot, but it's kind of, it's pretty darn visible, so, something like that, maybe, I assume you've already thought of it, so I'm just kind of curious, does that fall into the realm of serviceable, visible, pretty darn near the creek?
Thanks for your questions. So, yes, the thing that shall not be named. Yeah, we bring those in for events, and they are required for all events that are over 100 people expected. They do require a flat surface, we have to be able to get a water line to them, we have to be able to service them, which means we usually have to bring up some kind of vehicle, and our vendors have to be able to access them. As we have for many events, they, there are limitations to the time that they can be in certain areas. So, you're usually seeing them come in for a couple of days and then leave again. That is not only for servicing, but that is usually associated with the length of time the event is occurring. These more flexible solutions will also require us to be able to have a water line come up to them, and for them to be serviced. I have not done all of the work, although we're happy to pursue that through our varied departments for what might be appropriate locations. To Jane's point, however, we have had difficulty, as we get closer to the creek itself, in having adequate water, or power, or a flat surface. These are all significant challenges. We did this at the golf course, and it takes quite a while to source the material and build the ability to be out of the floodplain and service them appropriately. When you see, for example, the Denver mobile vehicle, that's the kind of thing you would be able to bring in and take out. The challenges with that are, you'd probably need to put it close enough to power lines and water lines to service, and then, and/or we'd have to move it regularly, and so I'm not sure how that works yet. We're still really investigating all of this, but we wanted to bring it to your attention that we were thinking about it, and are sensitive to it. I, I would be remiss if I also did not point out that, aside from the hours of availability, there are significant challenges with some of these, in terms of ADA access, you have to build ramps off of them, that have to be attached or not. And then, servicing means that you probably have to install some area lighting, and some other things. So, I haven't discussed any of that. For example, at the Justice Center, we have experienced all this prior vandalism. I would want to turn to my colleagues in other departments, and try and figure out how we might address some of those things. These are just infrastructure options.
But just to, can I just follow up on, because I didn't, that was helpful, but I didn't quite hear an answer to Suzanne's question about whether a place like the Justice Center parking lot, for example, not necessarily that, but something like that is feasible for...
It's, it's possible, but I'd have to check with permitting.
Sure.
And I don't have that information at this moment.
Okay. Yep, thanks.
And the property is, you know, you got to look at who owns what property.
Of course, of course.
But, but there's, there's, there's a question too. Okay, at the end of the bike path, before you get to 4 Mile, there are two porta-potties that are ADA, that have been there permanent, I don't know, permanently, but they've been there for years, and are clean, and I know that they're not, anyhow. So, what, they are also not that far from the creek. So, I guess, there's something that allows them to be there permanently in, I'm guessing the high hazards, Dylan, that, I guess, I still don't understand. I, I know this isn't our ultimate long-term solution, but even if we decided to go there, why we couldn't have six months of the year, or whatever, porta-potties in a, a parking lot, like that? And so, I, I'm just sure there's reasons why, I'm just trying to understand them.
We can continue to explore those options as well. I think we'd want to consider, as we evolve this, you know, $8.7 million investment, you know, how we present that in the community, and we can certainly look at that. We, in fact, do have portal, you know, some restroom infrastructure even close, you know, by at the tee house. None of them are available, nor is that available in any city that I've found in this area 24 hours a day, and we do have challenges, because they are not staffed.
Anybody have some questions? Are you ready to, you're ready to comment? It, okay, so people ready to comment? Has anybody else got a...
I have a question.
Go for it.
Who owns, I mean, long time ago, before this camping ban started, I asked, could we have some kind of a tent structure on 6th, and, and I'm probably going too far there. But, isn't that the city of Boulder's property?
I'm sorry?
The parking lot in the Justice Center, or is that the county's property? Who owns that?
Right by the kids' fishing pond.
Yeah, by the fishing pond.
Hi, Council, Greg Testa, Police Chief. Lisa, I don't know who owns it, but the police department has responsibility to handle matters that occur in the parking lot, whereas the county or the sheriff's department handles the actual parking lot of the Justice Center. So, I'm not sure who owns it, but I know that we have primary responsibility to handle calls for service in that parking lot. We're talking about the east parking lot.
Yeah, just east of the, of 6th Street.
Yep.
But it seems to me that that site is suitably located, just in terms of, on that stretch, that you have access to electricity, so for lighting, and I wouldn't think water would be too far.
Okay, let's turn to opinions, and Andrew's dying to give you his.
So, I'm, I'm strongly against putting facilities down by the creek. I think, when we're talking about, we, I mean, the, the whole basis behind it was pictures of encampments. And, and all we're doing is facilitating and encouraging illicit and unsupervised and unsafe encampments. I'm, I'm not against an encampment, and I'll talk about that in just a moment, but, but, but the idea that, that we are encouraging, which we are doing, and we're, we're enabling and facilitating it, essentially illicit encampments, where things are taking place that, that no one is monitoring, that with, with an at-risk population, that is, it's, it's harmful to that population, as well as to the residents of the cities, for, for lots of reasons we've talked about. So, again, I mean, this, and I may be stepping too far, although I think May's too late to plan for the summer, I, I really think we need a supervised encampment away from the creek, with a bathroom facility, or bathroom facilities that is safe for the participants, and is safe for the public of Boulder, and it's far preferable to providing bathrooms down by the creek, that essentially encourages, you know, burying our heads in the sand and letting these encampments occur along the creek, so...
Okay. Opening volley, bam.
Aaron.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I totally agree with Andrew. I think one of the bigger issues here is that, right now, we have, after May 1st, we have no emergency night beds, and I know that's not your issue, or...
And it's not what we're talking about tonight, yeah?
It is the city's issue, and I think the other thing is that we have no day shelter. And I would agree with Andrew and his comment, in that we need to identify some kind of facility where we have year-round night shelter and year-round day shelter. And we're going to be at May 1st here pretty soon, and we're going to have a lot of people who are violating our ordinances through no...
Okay, I'm going to ask you though, answer that question. Do you want...
Probably not.
Probably not. All right.
Okay, well, Lisa, I agree with your interest in those other facilities as well, and Andrew, I agree with you about the need to look into that, legal encampment. But, but I think bathrooms don't enable illegal behavior, they meet a fundamental human need, you know? So, so I think by putting a bathroom in, you're, you're just, you know, helping people out, you know? And that's not just people who are homeless, it's people who are using the creek facilities, the bike path, or whatever, whoever happened, might happen to be there. So, and I think there is a serious lack of bathroom facilities down there, and, and it's, I think we could, without sanctioning illegal behavior, we could make our cleanliness problems better by having bathrooms, and meeting important human needs. So, I would, I very much support exploring bathroom facilities. I like some, I think some of these flexible options that you're looking at have a lot of promise, so please do investigate them. And I'm certainly, and I'm open to having, while we're working on that, a couple porta-potties in, in a location that's, that's safe. but the idea that, that we are encouraging, which we are doing, and we're, we're enabling and facilitating it, essentially illicit encampments where things are taking place that, that no one is monitoring, that with, with an at-risk population, that is, it's, it's harmful to that population as well as to the residents of the cities for, for lots of reasons we've talked about. So again, I mean, this, and I may be stepping too far, although I think May's too late to plan for the summer, I really think we need a supervised encampment away from the creek with a bathroom facility or bathroom facilities that is safe for the participants and is safe for the public of Boulder, and it's far preferable to providing bathrooms down by the creek that essentially encourages, you know, burying our heads in the sand and letting these encampments occur along the creek, so.
Okay, opening volley, Sam.
Aaron.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say I totally agree with Andrew. I think one of the bigger issues here is that, right now, we have, after May 1st, we have no emergency night beds, and I know that's not your issue, or...
And it's not what we're talking about tonight, yeah.
It is the city's issue, and I think the other thing is that we have no day shelter. And I would agree with Andrew and his comment in that we need to identify some kind of facility where we have year-round night shelter and year-round day shelter. And we're going to be at May 1st here pretty soon, and we're going to have a lot of people who are violating our ordinances through no...
Okay, I'm going to ask you though, answer that question. Do you want?
Probably not.
Probably not. All right.
Okay, well, Lisa, I agree with your interest in those other facilities as well, and Andrew, I agree with you about the need to look into that legal encampment. But, but I think bathrooms don't enable illegal behavior, they meet a fundamental human need, you know? So, so I think by putting a bathroom in, you're, you're just, you know, helping people out, you know? And that's not just people who are homeless, it's people who are using the creek facilities, the bike path or whatever, whoever happened, might happen to be there. So, and I think there is a serious lack of bathroom facilities down there, and, and it's, I think we could, without sanctioning illegal behavior, we could make our cleanliness problems better by having bathrooms and meeting important human needs. So I would, I very much support exploring bathroom facilities. I like, I think some of these flexible options that you're looking at have a lot of promise, so please do investigate them. And I'm certainly, and I'm open to having, while we're working on that, a couple porta-potties in, in a location that's, that's safe and serviceable in the meantime.
I'm going to jump in here. I feel very strongly about this. I agree with Aaron. I think nobody should be having to clean up human waste along the creek. It's also a health hazard. It is a much-loved amenity, and I don't think we're facilitating people or attracting them, we are preventing a hazard. And so I guess I do feel strongly that what we're doing now, and God bless you all for the hard work you're doing, it's, it's not yet enough in terms of addressing that. And so I think we need to, not just you do it, anyhow, I think we, we, the city needs to adapt its approach and provide some facilities so that people aren't having to clean up. I, I'm not sure that it's a magic bullet by any stretch, but I think it's worth trying to see if that doesn't improve the situation. I mean, Boulder Creek is an important facility. It is out of compliance in terms of pollution, and this will only help it. So I guess, I do feel strongly, we should, as we, as we develop the civic area, absolutely, let's figure out beautiful ways to do it, but that's years down the road. So in the interim, what are some great ways to address the solution? And in the next few months, what are some temporary things while we figure out, depending on how long this takes? Yeah, I, I do think it's time for us to do something different. So, who's next?
I'm going to agree with Suzanne and Aaron. I think that we, that we need, do need to create facilities down there, long-term, they can be beautiful and part of the civic area and so on and so forth. I agree with Zan's earlier point, we've got lots of porta-potties and lots of trails, and they seem to work just fine, and I think the whole issue of people throwing them into creek is pretty easy, we just bolt them down. I mean, there's, there's solutions that are less than $16,000 a month here, it seems to me. So I would go as temporary as, as possible, so I'm with Aaron and Zan, that we should put them in, we should put them in every 300 yards, and if that means porta-potties for a while, that's fine. We, we should address the issue, like, right now, like, next week, not like spend months studying this and talk about spending $300 on bathrooms if we don't know where that's where they're going to go. So I would take care of the problem straight away.
Who's next? Sam.
So, I'm happy with, with solutions like that. I don't think they will be silver bullets. I mean, I think what we're going to end up with, even if we do an encampment somewhere at some point, is people who don't want to be there, just like there are people who don't want to be in the shelter sometimes. So I'm afraid it won't be a silver bullet, but I do concur that, on the whole, it will reduce a problem that is a sanitation problem. I would like to see more permanent solution, and I would be willing to entertain some solutions that are not just porta-potties. I'm fine with doing a porta-potty soon, but if we find that these other solutions, which might include a shower facility in some of them, would be something that would, maybe we could park in the Justice Center parking lot for three days a week and then move it somewhere else for a few days a week, that might be a better solution than a porta-potty. So I wouldn't get tied into that for the long run, but I don't, wouldn't mind seeing it in the short run. And I think the Justice Center parking lot is one which is maybe a no-brainer, because you could find parks that are maybe out of the high-hazard zone there, which I think we shouldn't, you know, staff is raising these issues because they're real issues. I mean, you don't want people being wiped out by a flood in the porta-potty. I mean, it's just not what, what, it's not good health and safety either. So I, I will support both going forward sooner with a porta-potty, but I would like to see staff, if they come up with an interesting, flexible option that can be implemented prior to Phase 2 of the civic area master plan, I'd be interested in seeing that. I'm open to discussing some potential other solutions, but I don't think we'll get that done tonight, so I'll just save comment on that.
So I support investigating, or the answer to this question is yes. And, but one thing that I would just recommend is to go back and look at the, the community response to when the public restrooms went in at the mall. There was a lot of concern there and conversations regarding its uses and potential uses. So I would just go back and revisit what the conversation was around that when that went up.
Well, can I, I'd like to colloquy on that, and also the issue, the real issues that were associated with using that facility, and then at some period it became really unusable. And, and are we creating something that we don't want to create, so?
So we might add classical music at any new facilities as well.
Right, right, right. But, I mean, I was here when that was built, a long time ago, and that, that was fine that when it first went in, and it was a mess for a long time after that. So it didn't function.
So, you know, along that, whatever best practices we've come up with managing that public facility and others, I mean, if it's hours of operation, if it's how frequent the cleaning is, I think we should at least use those in both the porta-potty stage and this stage, because, you know, that might be, that you get better longevity out of it and better service for people if you manage it by locking it for certain hours. I mean, it just, I don't know, but whatever worked downtown might be something we look at doing.
I also think that, and this is slightly off, but one of the 2A projects is to put lighting along the creek, and I didn't, at some, and I think that that's also part of this larger-term solution of making sure that the creek feels reclaimed by the public at large and as a safer place. Anyhow, that's not porta-pots, but I think that those, some of these solutions go together. So. Others haven't spoken on this? Do you want to speak? Nope, nope, nope. Yep.
So Jane, this is the question you presented us with, but we have a lot more information about what the city is thinking about. Is that, is what we were sent as the addendum to our packet what is going to happen, or what's, what's, how are we supposed to read that?
My view is that's what is going to happen, but we'll be coming back for additional dollars to make it so.
So. Yeah, let's just make sure we're all, that long list of 2017 things?
What I was asking about is, because this is just a summary of an eight-page packet memo.
Just, I, it's unclear to me what, what folks decided, and maybe it's just me, with respect to the, whether it's porta-potty or, or more stable option. Obviously, I've made my view clear in terms of having an alternative place for people to sleep. But that being said, and do bodily functions, that being said, I, I just, again, I think porta-potties themselves are, are challenging for so many reasons. I think that I've heard that, that we have issues with servicing our current porta-potties because of all of the needles and various other things associated with them. You have the vandalism issues. I don't think you can bolt them to the ground and service them. And, and so then, so for me, if you're going down the path of providing a location for people to use facilities and knowing that they're going to sleep nearby, I would prefer to see more of a, of a substantial, something, you know, something more substantive, that's not going to get vandalized, that's safer, like to see something supervised so that people feel welcome and it's not taken over by, with respect to illicit activity. The challenge, of course, is that if you close these in the evening, guess what? We're not solving the problem, we're just going to have the same waste deposited all night long. So I'm not, and, and the waste we've heard about is, again, it's not just fecal matter. We're talking about, you know, all sorts of other things. We've heard the people come in who've described what they've cleaned up, needles, various other types of things that are rather unsavory and contain bodily fluids and whatnot. That's not going into, into these facilities. In fact, you're not even supposed to put things like that in a lot of these facilities. And so I'm, I'm wondering how much we're going to help the situation. But again, I certainly would rather see something more substantive than just a porta-potty.
So I think if, well, you tell me, this notion of you all looking into it, because we are interest, again, if we decide, we're interested in some near-term solutions, even as we look to longer-term civic area solutions. Are we, are we open to what staff wants to bring back to us along the spectrum of mobile versus porta-pots or something else in between?
I'd like to hear two things from staff in the relatively short term. The first is a report on if we do porta-potties, how, how it's going, because I'm curious to see if it makes an improvement in the fecal matter or not, if it makes an improvement in, you know, people having their needs met. So I would like to know what is found by staff within four to six weeks, just to make sure that we're not missing something important here. But I agree with you, Andrew. I would prefer to see it not be porta-potties, plastic temporary toilets in the long run. I'd prefer to see something like we saw either from the Denver thing and ultimately permanent. But I think, you know, there's a bus in San Francisco that goes around and provides showers as well, and so there's other things that we could look at that are ways to improve people's life and maybe have other contacts with them so that we can tell them about additional services. You know, it's just another contact opportunity when you have that serviced facility, whatever it is. So I'd be curious to hear what staff comes up with. The reason I'm supporting porta-potties now is because we know city processes can take a long time and they can be staff-limited, so I would prefer to see us make progress on it sooner than later.
And I guess I would also add, and this issue of Sharps is a huge problem. Having them down by the creek, huge problem. If I throw that into part of the solution, if, I mean, you walk into Union Station, you go into the bathroom, there's a Sharp disposal thing in...
So we're going to be working with Boulder County to find out how to get Sharps containers installed, is the wrong word, placed appropriately along the creek.
Okay, because I, I think that that may also, yeah.
That's great to hear, Jane, thank you, because it is, is a very serious problem. But I agree very much with what Sam said and, and Andrew's most recent point about more permanent things. But I think to Andrew's point, I think trash disposal, I think, would be another piece of this, if we can do it, you know, the, so if we can have a couple big trash bins along with the restroom thing that are, can be emptied at the same time as the, you know, so I, I know that that imposes more work, but it might reduce work cleaning up along the creek. So trash of different kinds, it would be great to have better disposal options for those as well.
Gary.
I do have a concern with the porta-potties. And I'll quickly just tell a quick story about, there used to be one over by KC, and oftentimes there were people locked in it sideways. So, just saying.
So, so there are eight council members here tonight. Four have indicated a desire for porta-potties. Three have indicated not a desire for porta-potties, and one has not spoken. So I'm not sure what staff should do.
Well, just those of us who's, I think, are open to porta-potties. I would love staff to come back with their best temporary solution. That's what I'm open to. It doesn't have to be porta-potties, it's just porta-potties are known technology that you can call up and rent tomorrow. So there's a speed factor there, but I'm not wedded to a particular solution other than having one sooner rather than later for the short term.
Can I ask a question? Because I think Sam started, go here. Among the four who are neutral or anti-porta-potty, how would you all feel about a pilot, which we could immediately put into effect, like, next week, and try it for four to six weeks while you're exploring these other things? I mean, you know, Andrew and the others that are opposed to that. It would solve an immediate problem, it would buy us some time, and we might find out it's a wonderful solution, or we may find out it's a really, really dumb idea, but it really wouldn't have cost us much of anything.
I guess, Matt, there's a question here about what you think. It would probably be helpful in a closely aligned council to hear what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't said anything. On this one, I really was interested in what staff was going to bring back to us. I am not a fan of the porta-potties. I think there's almost no chance it's going to work. They will be vandalized, they will be trashed, maybe not on day one, but somewhere along the line. And I just don't think that's a solution. I, there is a question of where you put them, high-hazard zone, all of that stuff. We do, by the way, the, the parking lot is mostly owned by the county. We own the southern part of it amazingly. I suspect we must lease it to them, though, because there are cars parked in that portion of it.
Right, I, I don't think we can assume that we will be able to put something there.
Yeah, I wouldn't assume that at all. I, I mean, my biggest, I, I think there should be some facilities along the creek, don't get me wrong, but I think the real problem is, I don't assume that we should have people camping there in eternity, and we need to...
Nobody does.
No, I wouldn't say that. I think a lot of people do. I, I don't think nobody does is the right answer.
Being on council.
I, even there. I don't think nobody does. So I think we need to assume that that's not going to be a permanent state, and we need to make it not a permanent state, and then you come up with different solutions. And that's the problem. We're trying to solve one problem that is based on something that really should not be continuing, and you'd come up with a different solution if that weren't continuing. And that's why I'm not too thrilled with some temporary solutions that I don't think are going to work. I would like staff, though, to take a look at this. I think maybe something like Denver's doing could make sense in certain circumstances at the moment. I can't imagine, though, something being open 24 hours a day, so it's not going to solve all the problems, and I don't think anything's going to solve all the trash problems either. Doesn't mean you don't try to bite off some of it, and that's really why I didn't say anything, because I thought staff was going in the right direction of, let's investigate some of these other solutions, which I think is the right thing to do, even if they are temporary, but probably not ugly porta-potties.
Well, I guess...
I have a quick porta-potty story. No, we, one, I have a porta-potty story. One of our many parks is on Columbia Cemetery, and I work there sometimes as a volunteer, and invariably when we show up in the morning, there are homeless people, I'm sleeping there, we kind of shoe them out. And there's been a porta-potty there for as long as I can remember, at least back to 2009, same porta-potty, same place, never been tipped over, never been vandalized, as far as I know. Works perfectly well, the homeless people use it, it's open 24 hours a day. So I mean, there is an example, it's right next to a creek, so there's an example of a porta-potty in a park that actually works. So I don't want us to make assumptions that this won't work, that's why I'd like to try it for a few weeks.
Okay, so...
I don't know where it is now, so.
Okay, well, so I, I also want to just point out the obvious to everybody, that in May, the larger homeless issue is coming to us, which day sheltering and maybe this other issue of, well, and emergency sheltering, that whole suite of things is coming back to us, and that, of course, is the bigger thing. But meanwhile, this is an immediate, at least temporary, response to an existing need. So, but I do want to say, we're not pretending that this has any way addressing the larger homeless issue, which will be addressed in May. So what are we doing? I just wanted to make, oh, what are we doing? What did you, I count that more people are interested in some sort of temporary solution, a little agnostic on exactly what it looks like, but with maybe wishing it would happen sooner rather than later, and then there are several people that are against it.
Can I, can I, can I phone a friend and give Jan a call?
No. Okay, I, yeah. Do you, do you want more clarity?
I don't think we can get more clarity tonight because we have an even number of council members. So we will proceed with all deliberate speed to understand a temporary solution.
Are you bringing it back to us, or you're going to go forward with something?
We will likely bring it back to you, so you, at least you know what we're doing. And if we encounter problems with location, we're going to have to come back to you and talk about that. But we'll work as hard as we can to get something done, but it's not going to be that which shall not be named.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Oh, oh, we have one last, real quick thing, does everybody look, are we good on this one? Okay, one last thing, is everybody look at your chart, which is boards and commissions application, and you'll notice we do have a lot, except for UCAM-C, we don't have any. So therefore...
Yeah, Ken, I don't know if we, I don't know what the procedure is in a study session here, but maybe just suggesting that we, we keep that one open for a little while longer. Yeah, yeah.
Is everybody cool with that?
Yeah.
Right, I think staff in, yeah, staff would hold that one open unless somebody objects. All righty, and we're pretty cool with the rest, right?
All righty, and we're pretty cool with the rest, right?
There was a three-year term on that one, and the person can't reapply? On UCAMC, there was a three-year term, and the person can't reapply?
Yes, you can reapply. Maybe the person, I don't even know who it is, but the person put...
It was Cheryl, and...
You can reapply.
Well, she's under the impression that she can't reapply because she has to wait two years to do so. Oh, she can reapply.
No, that's not true.
So, because she really wants to reapply, so.
Oh, you can reapply.
And that's easy, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. You good? Good, John?